I'd like to call the May 19th Hybrid Town Board Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
My pledge of allegiance is to the by United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Now please bow your heads for the invocation. Heavenly Father, again, please watch over our first responders, our medical personnel, and all our citizens during COVID-19. We especially pray for all those families who have lost a loved one or a close friend during this time. We ask all this in your son's name. We go to item number four, adjustment approval of the May 19th, 2020 meeting agenda, I think. Wait for a second. There you go.
Make a motion to accept the May 19th, 2020 agenda with no changes.
Second.
Motion made in second half, all favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Number five, public comment period, I guess we've had in writing, how many, count four or five?
We had six public comments opposed to the Pine Springs development, one pro, and one public comment requesting assistance for small businesses.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much. And in this case, we're going to open and close the public comment period and go to item number five, which is the public hearing. Pine Springs Preparatory Academy Middle School Development Plan, Special Exception Use and Variance of Development Standards 19 DP, it's hard to talk into this thing, DP 10, 19 SUE 06, 19 VARTC 02, 19 VARTC 03. And with that, Sean Ryan from Planning and Zoning. Sean, welcome.
Excuse me, before we continue, Mr. Mayor, I would like to recuse myself in discussion with the town attorney. We think that's the best course of action, given my associational relationship with the school.
Your motion to adjourn, or motion to recuse? Or motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to recuse Councilman Villicin from item five.
Motion made in second half, all favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Now Sean Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening, Sean.
Sean Ryan with the Department of Planning and Zoning. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is to consider a request for a development plan, special exception use variances, and the associated waivers for Pine Springs Preparatory Academy. Tonight, we will conduct a quasi judicial public hearing, and then before you, you will have a motion for a resolution to accept findings of fact, and then a motion on the development plan for Pine Springs. The property is located at 1729 north, south of Rosewood Center, north of Easton Acres, and west of the Arbor Creek neighborhood in the northern part of the town's jurisdiction. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see a close-up map of the site location just along North Main Street, north of Catha Drive, and south of Rosewood Center Drive. The applicant is requesting a special exception use for a new public school in the R20 zoning district. The school is approximately 64,700 square feet in size, with 162 parking spaces proposed. There are two parking waivers that are being requested. One is for a parking reduction of 25%. Highlighted in purple on the screen is the location where the applicant is proposing, where additional parking can be provided if it is needed in the future. The second parking waiver is a parking location waiver. We limit the number of parking spaces between a building facade and a street frontage to no more than 75%. Due to the extension of Richardson Street, the parking area in orange on the screen exceeds that maximum 75% requirement. A variance has also been requested to reduce the setback along Richardson Street to allow for the parking and future recreation area, which is located in green, to be located where they are shown on the site. And that is a reduction in setback from 30 feet to 10 feet. This is the proposed tree preservation map. You can see the school in gray on the far right side of the screen. The areas in purple are the 10% minimum tree preservation areas required by our ordinance. The areas in that yellowish-orange color are the additional tree preservation areas that are being provided on the site. You will notice that along the north and south property line boundary, tree preservation is being provided as part of the perimeter buffer requirements for this project. This is the proposed landscaping plan. All the town's landscaping ordinance requirements have been met. We'll point out that adjacent to residential property, a type C 75 opaque buffer yard is required. So that would be predominantly along the south side of the property, adjacent to Easton Acres, as well as a portion of the northern part of the property where there's an existing single-family home. Along the bypass, a type C 225 opaque undisturbed area is being provided for the buffer yard. These are the proposed building elevations, which feature a mixture of brick and block. There are two waivers being requested that go along with the architectural elevations, one for roofline modulation and one for building baywood. And both of those occur at the main entrance to the building, where the building has been designed with an entry feature. There is also a variance being requested for the minimum height, or excuse me, the maximum height, to exceed the maximum height of 35 feet. They're proposing a 42-foot structure. At this time, I will invite Rachel Jones with our engineering department up to go over the infrastructure requirement.
All right. Good evening. Rachel Jones with engineering. I'll walk you through the engineering components of the project. This first slide shows the utility plan submitted. The western side fronts the GB Alfred Highway, and we have North Main Street to the east, Rosewood Center Drive to the north, and Catha Drive to the south. The utility connections will be provided with this project. There is a connection to existing water main on North Main Street that will extend through the site, and also a connection to existing water main at Rosewood Center. This water main is proposed to extend through Richardson Street, which is a new street, and will provide a stub for future connection when the property to the south develops. The sewer will be provided through connection with existing manhole to the southwest of the site, and extended through the site and connect for service to the building. There's also in purple highlighted here, overhead utilities along the property frontage on North Main Street. The applicant has submitted a waiver to pay a fee and lieu relocating those overhead lines underground due to the minimum length requirements not being met, and that is in accordance with our standards and ordinances. Moving on to transportation, traffic impact analysis was completed with the project. This is an overview of the study area. So you'll see Old Smithfield Road, Sunset Lake Road to the north. This is North Main Street. There's Sportsmanship Way and Anchor Creek Way. We have Catha Drive south of the project site, and Rosewood Center Drive to the north, and then GB Alfred Highway to the west. The red circles are the study intersections with the project. This is the new access point here, and there is a new traffic signal proposed at this intersection. This slide gives us a closer look at some additional transportation improvements that were identified as needed with the project. Working our way from west to east, the development will dedicate 20-foot additional right-of-way along the property frontage with GB Alfred Highway for future widening. The project is constructing the two-lane collector street called Richardson Street, shown on the comprehensive transportation plan, and right-of-way extends to the property line for a future connection and extension to Catha Drive, which will be south. Moving along to North Main Street, our ordinances and standards do require thoroughfare widening across the project frontage with development, but due to general statute limitations, that is not being offered by the applicant with this project. However, they are dedicating the five-foot additional right-of-way that is required to meet the ultimate cross-section in the future, in constructing the sidewalk in the ultimate location across the property frontage. There is a new access proposed with the project off of North Main Street, which will be limited to a right-in, right-out only. There's my mouse. To achieve that, a concrete median will be installed on North Main Street to restrict those left-turn movements. And an exclusive southbound right turn lane will also be constructed to encourage that movement into this access. At the intersection of Rosewood Center Drive and North Main Street, a proposed traffic signal is being shown on the development plan. And on Rosewood Center Drive, the proposed development shows restriping to include three lanes. There's no additional pavement required to achieve this. The pavement is existing. This will just allow for a little more flexibility during the carpool hours. So this final slide is a summary of the recommendations that were found as a result of the TIA. On the left-hand side, you'll see the study intersections. In the middle are the recommendations. And to the right, this indicates with a check mark that the project has committed to constructing the improvement. If it does have an X, that means that it is not being offered with this project. There are a couple items that I just wanted to highlight. We touched on a couple of slides previous to this, that thoroughfare widening is required per our unified development ordinance. However, it's not being offered with this project due to the general statute limitations. The next item would be the proposed signal at the intersection of Rosewood Center Drive and North Main Street. A signal warrant analysis was completed with the project. So along with that, the results of that data analysis, and the current congestion and safety issues existing, a new signal was proposed at the intersection. So the applicant is committed to design and install the signal, but is not committed to fully fund the signal. So to achieve this improvement, the town and developer would have to enter into a funding partnership with the town committing to up to $100,000 toward that signal installation and design. I'd like to invite up our planning board representative to touch on what we discussed at that meeting.
Welcome, Rick.
Yes. Did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. I was just going to wait for this word.
Can you hear it? So as with most projects that come to town, the biggest question is always traffic. So that was obviously the biggest question, the most things we asked. So here's some of the questions we asked. We're asking how much more this would add to the daily traffic totals in the morning when the school is opening, and in the afternoon when school is letting out. Now, while traffic is only about an hour a day, there was still a lot of concern with the traffic in the nearby areas. We found out that they're adding the stoplights at the intersection of Rosewood Center and North Main Street, they're extending Richardson instead of widening the Main Street, and the restriping Rosewood for better traffic flow. We also found out that the SRO that stands out fronts in the morning and afternoons will not be needed anymore now that there will be a traffic light. There's also questions on why did they consider connecting to GB Alfred Highway? Those were the main traffic questions. Couple other questions we asked. We were asking if the SRO had been funded yet from the town for the middle school. There were concerns about landfill orders, which as we know, in this town's big issue. But as you can see from the development plan, there were a lot of tree buffers with this new school. We're concerned about the parking reduction waiver, and if that was needed, because when there are special events, are they going to have problems parking in the area? And we also asked how many students will be located in the new school that are now currently at the existing school? How many students are there now, and how many will be there when both schools are in operation? As you can see from the screen, the board recommended approval unanimously for the special exception use in development plans, because it was consistent with the vision of Holly Springs. There was one dissent on the waivers, everything concerned about the traffic infrastructure not being sufficient. And we did add one condition we are trying to push for. We wanted the traffic student to be out before the school opens, to minimize the issues for the nearby neighborhoods. Any questions?
Questions, Rick? Good?
Thanks.
Good.
At this time, if you have any questions for staff, we're happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can start the quasi judicial hearing and hear from the applicant.
Questions of either Sean or Rachel at this point?
I have one. Yes, sorry, one. I guess it's the, sorry, it's waiver 41, the underground utility waiver. Does that waiver stop a fee and lieu payment, or is the waiver instead, the waiver is the way of the requirement to do the work, but then instead pay a fee and lieu? And if we approve the waiver, then they would pay the fee?
Correct. The condition of approval on the waiver would be that a fee and lieu is required.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Shall I hear from the applicants at this point? The applicants, please come forward. I recognize one of those guys, even with the mask on. I recognize both of you. Come forward to podium, yeah, and just repeat your name and what you do, and you've got to go.
I'm Paul Stamen, attorney for the applicant. We have Andy Petty here, who's the engineer, and I think we have, is that Joshua Ranky? Okay. Can you signal him? Our traffic guy is here, and you may have questions about traffic.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep, you could. And we were advised that you would like us to proceed rapidly.
No, briefly.
Briefly. And so what I'd like to do is, Mr. Petty will very briefly describe his qualifications, who he's consulted with, that kind of thing, set up a predicate. The first four findings of fact will go through rather rapidly, and then we'll slow down on the other findings of fact and the waiver requests, and you'll talk more about that. There are a couple that relate to traffic, and with Mr. Ranky's here, we'll get into that. I think there's a slideshow in front of you, and the first, do we push it, or do y'all push it?
You can use the mouse.
There you go.
This is, this is just, you've had this, why the need, this is not something we're testifying to do tonight, but you've seen that. The idea there is, we need schools. This is a great school. It wants to expand. What's the plan? And when we get to the coordination between the town's vision and the strategic plan, and then when we get to finding the fact, let me ask Mr. Petty a few questions. Mr. Petty, in about a minute, tell us what you're competent to do, what your profession is, who you've consulted with in this project, and...
Whatever.
Whatever. My name is Andy Petty. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. I work for Curry Engineering Group. We've been working on this project for about a year, been working closely with staff and other engineers and architects for the building. We're knowledgeable in code interpretation, site design, traffic studies, water studies, utility models, and such, land grading, and generally how to lay out a site, and whether it's programmatically, and does it fit within the confines of what the town's comprehensive plan wants it to be.
And who did you consult with? Town staff, and traffic architects, and traffic planners?
Yeah, we've worked with all the town staff and engineering planning departments, and as well as our traffic engineer. Actually, the town was the one responsible for hiring the TIA consultant, so that was kind of a joint effort between us and the town as well.
And if you would turn to finding, proposed findings of facts, one through four, can you elaborate on just a few of these items? I'm doing these, the first four, rather rapidly, so I can slow down on the others.
Yeah. And number one, the proposed use will not injure, or adversely affect, the adjacent area or property values within. You know, not being a real estate broker, but historically, neighborhoods have done pretty well, and have been very sought after when they are surrounded by schools, especially schools that perform well. And if you look at one of our first slides, Pine Springs was one of only, I think, 119 to receive an A rating and excelled growth out of 2,500 public schools. So we believe by having a dedicated elementary and a middle school, and giving the community an option, that that helps with the surrounding neighborhoods being desirable and being sought after. Number three, the proposed use is consistent with the character of the district and land uses authorized here within, and the town of Holly Springs comprehensive plan. As we kind of stated in the first findings of facts, this is an allowable use with a special exception within the zoning district, so we feel like we're complying with that. But additionally, this area's land use planned for mixed use, and while this property itself is not mixed use, the surrounding areas are made up of residential areas, retail, you've got a daycare across the street, restaurants across the street, and we feel like the school fits in with the other uses, and that fits the mold and the idea of the mixed use without being mixed use itself. And then, the number four, the proposed use shall conform to all development standards. We believe that we're doing that with how we've laid the site out, and how we've laid this building out, with the exception of some of the waivers that we've presented towards you, and we'll get into that as we get further along. But the general basis behind where the building is laid out, how it's laid out, the way it looks, and the adjacencies, and where we put parking, and how we put connections and driveways, we feel meet the intent of the ordinance of the town.
We'll pass over number five, which is traffic, until the traffic engineer comes up. Number six, what do you have to offer us as evidence on number six?
About having a site plan, it's a little bit difficult, but the off-street parking, off-site loading areas, trash enclosures, trash pickup removal, and other services located as to be safe, convenient, and allow for access in case of emergency. The way we've laid the site out is, we have tried to place the majority of the parking as far away from North Main Street as we could. We've done that for a couple reasons. One is to prevent a distraction as people drive by to see this big giant parking lot as you drive down North Main Street, which is something that I believe the town is more moving towards, as far as having buildings closer to the street, putting the trash internal. We've got a service drive that comes off on the inside of the site, where we put the trash enclosure at, so that you wouldn't see anything from the street, there would be no smell, but it would also be convenient for the school and how they operate to be able to take trash out to the facility. The other thing we've done is, if you see, we've got a very large buffer along GB Alfred Highway to help with any of the issues and the odor in the landfill.
Addressing number seven, does your proposed facility meet the building and fire codes?
In consultation with our architect, and we've submitted to the Department of Insurance, and we believe that the building in this will meet all North Carolina fire and building codes as required.
Addressing number eight, how about utilities? Do you provide all necessary utilities?
As Rachel said, all the necessary utilities are within the area. We've had to provide special studies for the water extension and for the sanitary sewer to prove that this facility will not create a hardship for the town, or be overtacting of those facilities. Those have been approved as part of the development petition. And then, as we stated earlier, traffic impact analysis was done by a consultant hired by the town, and as you can see by the slide that Rachel had up, we have committed to doing all those elements within there, with the one exception being the widening of the thoroughfare widening, which I'll let Josh speak to a little more about that, but we don't believe that that piece of the TIA would provide any benefit from a volume and a traffic perspective. It's purely aesthetics and a requirement of the thoroughfare itself. It does not provide any volume or any traffic benefit.
Addressing, when did you just address? Addressing number nine.
Do you want to click? Please. There you go.
Thank you. Addressing number nine, what evidence do you have to present to us?
Kind of going back to where we've placed the parking areas, is to kind of place those away from the main thoroughfares and get those away. So we're trying to balance the appearance of what this looks, but also with not distracting people from driving by. And additionally, if you look at the site, there's a lot of topographical change in this site, so what we've done is incorporated that in the building design to take that into account and utilize that natural fall, so that we don't have to clear as many trees, and don't have to grade quite as much on the site. And what the waiver reduction for the buffer, we'll get into in a little bit, we're providing all the perimeter buffers as it exists to the outside of the site, as it looks to the adjacent properties. The buffers we're requiring for the variances are internal to the site, and that is really just to get things a little bit closer to each other adjacently, so we can use kind of double purpose between parking areas with the building and parking areas with a future recreational field.
It's agreeable. We'll defer to another witness here, and then come back to Mr. Petty. In about one minute, your name, your qualifications.
But you don't have to hurry.
Sorry, I was in a conference room holding area, and then ran up here. Josh Ranky with Ramey Kemp and Associates, registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. Been practicing for over 16 years now, and work on a lot of school studies across the state.
Tell us what we need to know about proposed finding the fact number five and 10 with regard to traffic and impact on the overall traffic situation, what's been being proposed to mitigate the difficulty?
Okay, yeah. So in the TIA, we did initially scope the TIA with the NC DOT and the town. The NC DOT was not interested in having a TIA conducted, so the town brought us under contract, and we worked with them. But we did look at what was recommended in terms of study area, and the typical standards for how we would conduct the study in terms of NC DOT and the UDO. So we did provide mitigation. One of the things is, I know the signal was mentioned previously, there are some timing, corridor timing things with the installation of the signal, and then the potential, the extension as well of the Richardson Street to the property line that'll stub out there that'll provide potential future connectivity that'll help. So as well as the third, restriping to create a third lane, those were the main mitigations to accommodate the new traffic.
Your testimony that you believe, your opinion that the mitigation measures will satisfy the town's needs for good traffic flow?
Yes. So the mitigation we had either meets or exceeds the development ordinance and NC DOT standards, because that's how we typically do it. Even if they're not interested, we still submit a complimentary copy of the TIA to them. So we followed both standards, and met or exceed the development ordinance and NC DOT standards.
And I don't want to matter, were you actually, consultant, you actually chose by the town or by the applicant?
This is, it's an unusual situation here. We were chosen by the applicant, and then because NC DOT determined that they did not want a TIA, in the current legislation, it was easier for the town to bring us under contract to conduct the traffic impact analysis.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to now continue with Mr. Petty, knowing that y'all will have questions for both of them, but if we can get it all out on the table first, that'd be good. Going to the requested, first requested waiver, which proposes a variance lap reduction in the Collector Street front yard from 30 feet to 10 feet. Mr. Petty, what's the reasoning for that?
Yeah, we've basically got a few reasons here. One is a hardship on just the amount. I mean, there's 23 acres, which seems like an awful lot of property for a middle school, but the long and short of it is, it's actually constrained by, there's a stream, a jurisdictional stream that runs through the back half of it, that basically prohibits you from developing the back, as well as because of the way the existing stub streets were done, right now it is called Catchet Street, which comes off of Rosewood, stubs to this property, and then the stub street that goes to the Easton Acres, they don't align, so it's not a straight shot. So what we have to do is kind of make it an S to make those two points of connection. So about saying, you put those two things in, you really kind of cut this property up into thirds, for lack of better terms. So what we're trying to do is condense and get everything in there programmatically, and according to what the ordinance requires us to do. And so by giving us another 20 feet allows us to crunch everything together and spread out a little more, give us a little more open space too for the school. We've created a little outdoor area up near the school to flatten everything out, but because of the steep topo, when you flatten that out, you've got to force the slope somewhere. So what we have to do is kind of make it an S to make those two points of connection. So about saying, you put those two things in, you really kind of cut this property up into thirds, for lack of better terms. So what we're trying to do is condense and get everything in there programmatically and according to what the ordinance requires us to do. And so by giving us another 20 feet allows us to crunch everything together and spread out a little more, give us a little more open space too for the school. We've created a little outdoor area up near the school to flatten everything out, but because of the steep topo, when you flatten that out, you've got to force the slope somewhere.
This is on Richardson Road?
Richardson Street, yeah. So it should be noted that Catchet Street is currently the name on one side, Richardson Street's the name on the other side, and the town has asked us to name this Richardson Street. So if that gets confusing, that's the reason behind that. One more thing. The other thing from a safety perspective, this is a school. And so internally, again, as I mentioned, the perimeter buffers are all remaining the same. But the internal buffer, what we want to do is make sure that we can keep line of sight on all of our kids. From parking areas, especially these, this buffer is from Richardson Street as it gets to the parking and then also to a future recreational area. And what you don't want is kids getting lost in a large buffer and not being able to get to see those. And the last item is the reason we're asking for this is adjacency, so that that parking area can kind of count as double duty for recreational area once this is able to get put in place, but then also serve the building as well.
Turning to the next proposed variance to the left. Allowed increase in the maximum building height from 35 feet to 42 feet, and you've discussed this with the architect?
We have, we discussed it with the architect, and really what this really entails is we've got queuing requirements they want to meet from NC DOT. And that kind of dictates where we're going to put the building and how we're going to stack everything in. And then with the steep topography, we have such amount of fall across this building. So this building is going to, you know, look like two stories on the front and three stories in the back. So when that fall comes in, by adding the parapet, it gets us a little taller than that 35 feet.
Going to the next proposed waiver. Reduction in the number of off-street parking spaces by 25 percent. What's the rationale evidence for that?
Yeah, so the way that the town code is written is basically we have to provide a number of spaces for multiple uses within the school. So in other words, we'll have to provide a certain number of spaces for the number of classrooms and a certain number of spaces for the maximum occupancy of the largest gathering area, which in this case is a full-size gym. The reality is, is that if you have your teachers in the classroom teaching, you don't have 80% of your people in the gym unless they're students and they're already at the school. You wouldn't have 80% of your parents coming into the school while your teaching session. That's not normally how that operates. So what you wind up with is you wind up with this very big parking lot that remains empty 80% of the time. So if you look at areas of schools, you have all this parking out here that nobody's ever really using on a general basis, especially in this situation here. We don't have buses, we're not parking anything like that. Again, back to environmental concerns, by adding, we're basically eliminating 53 spots. And if you look at that from just a quantity perspective and rough numbers, it's about 8,000 square feet of hard impervious surface area that we would be wind up having to treat. Someone will run off from it. You'd have additional asphalt that would create more heat, and it just doesn't make a lot of good sense if it's not going to be used. Another one, which is cost, the additional of these spaces to build them is not cheap these days. And constructing spaces that aren't going to be utilized doesn't make a ton of sense when you're talking about infrastructure for a school. And then the final reason for the request is that we have planned for future spaces. If for some reason we're all wrong and then there does become an issue and their spaces do need to be added, we have reserved room for them. So it's not like we don't have an additional capacity to make room for them if for some reason they are needed.
If you would address the next waiver.
This is the reduction that Sean talked about in the area in the yellow that he highlighted where we are basically have the majority of our parking between the building and Richardson Street. So essentially what we're wound up with, because Richardson Street cuts the property in half and then we have North Main Street as a frontage, we basically have this gap where we have two fronts. So unless we park on either ends near adjacent residential developments, we basically have to put all of our parking between one of these two roads. The design team decided that the better option was to place the majority of the parking between that and Richardson for a couple of reasons. One, back to trying to get back to the feel of what the town wants to see from an urban planning perspective and not see this giant parking lot and then the building. But the other idea being that most of the traffic for the school would come down Richardson Street and it would advocate for people to park in those areas as opposed to coming up towards North Main Street. So we felt like it was really an aesthetics thing and also a practicality standpoint because we also intend for that parking lot, if there is a sporting event or something like that at the school at some point in time, they can park in that area and they're not too far removed from that recreational area.
Betty, if you could address the issue of the continuous roof line. I don't even know what that is.
Well, in consultation with the architect, the goal is to change that roof line from 50 to 57 feet, so not a very big change there. And it's really to allow us to create a centralized location for the entrance of the school, so it looks more proportional when you're looking at the building. This building is a little bit longer in nature and the way that it looks, so to kind of break up things and to get that entrance squared in there. And then the elevations create different roof pitches, especially with the topography and the way that that works. Just trying to make it, essentially, we're trying to do this to make this a very good-looking building.
And if you would address the underground utility requirement?
I think Rachel hit on most of that. The add part I'll add to that is that because the thoroughfare widening is not occurring in its full fashion, you know, putting the, we don't want to get into a situation where we put these underground power lines underground and then then have to be removed later because of some widening that gets done to finish that out. Additionally, I'll point out the, overpower doesn't run the entire frontage of the property. It actually comes across the street about halfway down and then runs down, so it's not the entire frontage of the property that we have that utility line sitting out there. So we're still coordinating with Duke Energy on getting all that worked out.
And finally, you'd address the proposed waiver of building mass requirement. I don't know what that is either.
In consultation with the architect, again, this is generally related to trying to get the building to look and meet the intent of the ordinance by still allowing it to be, meet the shape of the property and be in a long building and break that building up and make it look proportional.
Mr. Mayor and Council, that is our evidence, and I know you'll have questions. And if you could just address whatever you want to answer the question, we'll step up.
Okay. Questions from the board? The applicants?
Not yet. I'd like to hear the public comment.
We'll wait for more. Anybody want to make questions now?
I'm fine if we, can we do that, Counselor? Can we open the public hearing and then come back to questions?
Sure. Step down?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We'll be back. So you want to open the public hearing now? As it relates to public hearing, we have five people signed up. And as I've always said, when you have more than two or three, if someone in front of you has said the same thing you're going to say or want to say, you agree with them, just say, "I agree with" or "I pass." But I'll call you up one at a time. The first one I got on here is Jesse Duar. Hi there. Come on down. If you would, when you get to podium, please, your name and your existing address, please, and try to speak into the mic. I know.
And the board.
Could you bring the microphone down?
I'm uncomfortable with this thing under my mouth. I am Jesse Duar. I am speaking from the Eastern Acres community.
Could you bring the mic, headset? Thank you.
I have several questions. The reason I'm speaking about this, this is my community. I have been in Eastern Acres for, for 50 years, and I just learned that we will go and have a school. I was asked questioning, why did they decide to build a school in that vicinity? Reason I'm asking that because when our children were going to school in that area, we had to go all the way to Cherry. Also, I think mainly what I'm questioning, the traffic. The traffic on Highway 55 is already terrible. Why would you want to put a school in that area? Because I live near Arbor Creek. When I come out of Arbor Creek from four to six until the east, someone had to blink that light or a honk a horn for me to come out of my drive. So I'm wondering, why would you want to put a school that would create more traffic? Also, I was wondering, could you put a traffic light between Cather Drive and Arbor Creek? Or is that traffic, is the light too close, would that light be too close to the one already down there near the athletic park? Would that be too close? Because the people in Arbor Creek, we have a problem getting out. And especially around the school.
And what we're doing here is, you have sworn testimony and we're not really going to answer your questions at this point, but they're all taken and we'll check on anything that you have open for questions.
Mainly questioning the traffic.
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you. Next would be Cecilia McCullers. It's hard to get out of there, isn't it? Just reminder, name and address, please.
My name is Cecilia McCullers and I reside at 5629 Eastern Street in Holly Springs. I've been a resident of Eastern Acres for probably 30 years. And I'm actually on the opposite side of McLean Street where Richardson Street runs adjacent from Cather Drive and Eastern, and Eastern Street. So I'm not opposed to the school. I'm just concerned about the adjacent road extending to Richardson Street. And I hear Richardson Street is going to be the main road for the movement of traffic coming in and out of the school. Which, again, I'm not trying to say the same thing, but I see the other schools in town where neighborhoods have issues with the parking. One Pacific is Holly Grove Middle School. We're going to have the same issues where parents are parking along in the neighborhood to walk their children to school. There are multiple complaints coming out of the neighborhood adjacent to Holly Grove with parents parking in that neighborhood and walking their children to school. I see that as a problem. We're going to have the same problem. Our children that live in that neighborhood, you know, we don't have an existing playground and, you know, we're old school. So we still ride scooters in the street and ride bikes in the street, play basketball in the street. I didn't hear anything about any type of sidewalks being put down for the safety of walking. That's a concern as well. And I know me, if I hear that there's going to be a stoplight at the entrance of Rosewood and 55, she asks about McLean. And then you have Eastern Street. Me as a parent, I don't like the way that I'm impatient. So what's going to happen is, they're going to come from the school, they're going to go to Eastern Street. It's going to be a line going out to McLean Street and 55. So what would I do? I would shoot across to Eastern Street and go out another way. It's I hear the plan, the plan sounds good. Like I said, I'm not opposed to the school, but I think that if there is another option for another exit to the school or entrance to the school, I don't know how Cridgerton would work. Sounds like the bypass is a no-go. But I feel that that adjacent to Eastern Acres is really going to cause a big issue. We have elder members there and the ones that is really going to affect, they're not here. The ones that is going to, you know, hear the cars coming back and forth. I don't know the proposal of how many more cars is going to project coming through that area or how many more students. I didn't hear a number. And I know the school currently, three years ago, whenever they started, they projected a little over 500 kids. And now there are 700-plus kids going there where they had to bring in mobile units. I see this as a potential issue probably with the new middle schools. Because we do, you know, the town is growing. So what's going to happen? And I know that there's projected, there's a playground that they are building, which looks pretty big, nice playground. I don't know if it's going to incorporate a football field, a track field, outdoor sports. What else is it going to incorporate? Where there is going to be traffic, we're saying maybe an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon when school is coming in and letting out. What if, I mean, if they, I'm not for sure if they are going to have a football field or track field. But it's going to cause a more traffic problem. And like I said, people along that street, they're elderly people. None of them are here to voice their opinion, and I don't really think they fully understand what the proposal is. So I'm speaking on my behalf and also their behalf because, like I said, they can't, they don't, they can't speak for themselves because, of course, they're not here. So that's my thing. I had some stuff wrote down. The stoplight at, I'm for the stoplight at Rosewood and 55. That's much needed, is very dangerous for officers to be out there directing traffic. I don't really understand when they spoke of putting a median or some type of concrete barrier so people are forced to go right. I don't know, is that at the light? Are they going to be forced to go right or is it a four-way stoplight? I'm really, I'm not clear on that. And what are the, you know, the future plans? Are there, are there going to be any more streets coming through there? I heard a rumor about another street coming from Cather and McLean. I don't know if that's true or not. But that's a concern as well. I don't know if the school is only vehicle only or will there be school buses coming through there or some type of transportation vans or buses, things of that nature. And I know that our older residents, they walk in the mornings. Where are they going to walk? I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Claudia Caulfield, please. Again, name and address, please.
Good evening. I do share the same concerns as my neighbors. And also the plan of what brought up a lot of our concerns as well. But I'm speaking on behalf of one of my neighbors who could not be here tonight. She lives at 5712 McLean, at the corner, McLean and Cather Drive. And she wants, she wants to be assured that if her, the corner of her house at McLean Street, is that going to be a straight-through street for that traffic? She has, there are no sidewalks. Where are our children going to play? Are they going to be in the street? Are there playgrounds proposed and sidewalks? How are the exits and entrances of these streets that's supposed to be in the, you're using a lot of technical terms. Collector Street. I mean, what does that mean to a layperson? We need to be clear on how these streets are going to be. Are they, it seems like you're going to get to, are they going to be straight-through streets? You're going to be using, or is it going to be a street that's not going to connect a residence in the current neighborhood, are they going to be able to go through these streets? You have all of this reduced parking, but right now, like they said, when the, when the school increase, traffic increase. the school increase, traffic increase, special events, evening events, the parking will prob, will be a problem if you're talking about parking on the street of Richardson Street. Is that going to be the same situation at McLean Street? I mean, there's so many unanswered questions and I can't really visualize it. And another issue was that you sent out the, the public hearing sign was on Richardson Street, but then I go by Richardson Street just about every day, I saw that sign, but I was unaware of the public hearing sign that was attached to this project that was located on McLean Street until I was informed by one of my neighbors. So why is it that we can't get a clear message through the neighborhood that a hearing is going to be on these two spots alone versus we are thinking that was going to be just one spot? Because we don't go that way in that direction every day. They didn't put one out on the main highway, Highway 55. So we were really late getting this information out. And then we take, we take issue with just sending the information out to the residents on Catha Drive when this project is going to affect the whole community from Eastern to Catha, Richardson, McLean, all their residents. Even on, you sent the notices out on the people that live on the right-hand side, but the residents that live on the opposite side of the street, they didn't get notification of this plan. So, why is it? Why is it you didn't want to notify all the neighbors about this change in their neighborhood? We always, we already may feel some kind of way because what you want to do to our neighborhood start with. So when they come and trying to change the roads, then without even giving us proper notice, so we, we had to go at the last minute and investigate where these were, these streets were, what would it look like? We saw the street that they have to rename to Richardson Street because we were wondering what was that street going to connect to? And it's still a mystery. We don't know where McLean is going to connect. Is that going to be a connecting road? So, yeah, my neighbors want to have, ones that are not here want answers to those questions and so do we. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have, I think I'm saying this right, Mariva Burt, am I right? They're close enough?
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor.
Before we go to the next, we have one additional person who has been sworn in, Kristin Stocking. If you could add her to your list, she will testify.
Okay, thank you. Come on down.
Mayor, Councilor. I wonder if I could ask a quick question here before we move on. It seems that we may not have sufficient facts for the public to, to understand the scope of where this is going based on maybe a lack of what we presented from the staff side as to the connection of these roads or the lack of connection of these roads. So we're spending a lot of time talking about connections that appear to not be even part of this development plan or even any future plan. So we're spending a lot of time on that and a lot of folks talking about it right now.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Marvia Burt and I was listening to all that was said and there's a lot of Richardson Street and I have property on Richardson Street. And it seems as if with building of this school, if the traffic is going to be on Richardson Street. So I want to know how, how is that traffic going to impact me on Richardson Street? So that is my main question. And I agree with everything that the speakers before me has, has said because it is a neighborhood and it's a neighborhood that has been there and it seems as if this project is invading the neighborhood without letting the neighborhood know in advance what's going on and how we will, how traffic will be, how our neighborhood will be impacted. So, that is all I have to say. Mainly, it's about Richardson Street. There is a lot of information about Richardson Street traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, name and address, please. You know the drill.
Good evening, Mayor. Good me, good evening, Council. So good to see all of you. I'm here to speak on behalf of my community. I'm in Arbor Creek. My name is Frances Perkins and I've been in Arbor Creek for twenty years, but I'm not just speaking of Arbor Creek, I'm speaking of Holly Springs and that whole community. As a council that I believe in, you represent the people and we have to start being mindful about the people and not just a isolated group of people. Again, I've been in Arbor Creek for twenty years. The last year was a nightmare coming out of there in the morning. I traveled to RTP to work, which means I have to get up earlier so that I'm not being impacted by the traffic. And even the way it was designed and how it was being accommodated, the police officer that would be out there guiding and directing the traffic, of course he's doing the best he can, but that wasn't a fair solution to those of us that are coming out of there at Holly Springs. And I'm asking, as a council that is, that's making these decisions, don't think of the moment, think of the impact over a period of time and the increase that you're being asked to bring into a, an area that's already almost over-precipitated. There's only so much more you can put in that area. There's daycare centers, there's, there's a lot already in that area. The sports center is there. And is it really fair to people that have been there for years that do not understand what's happening to their communities and the impact that it's having, not just to the individual guys, it's a community. We're talking about people that's been there for twenty, thirty, thirty years. Be mindful. Lifetime, right. For some of us, it's, it's been their lifetime. I ask as a board that you listen to the people. The people are trying to let it be known. We don't, some don't understand, some will never understand, but we have got to try to make it a level understanding for people that have been there all their lives. It's their right, they're, they're feeling like they don't belong to the community and Holly Springs is a beautiful place to be and don't take that home, that, 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 that home lead feeling away from everybody. It's not fair. It's, it's not fair. That's all I have to say. I mean, I'm vibrant. No, I don't like having to get up earlier every morning, but I get up earlier every morning so I can get out of there. But now I have grandchildren in the neighborhood, they want to be able to come home, get on their bikes. I, I don't want to leave because I want to make sure they're getting on the bus safely to go to school. The traffic that comes through there, guys, is unbelievable and there are people that are not obeying by the, um, the traffic laws, they're coming through there like it's a speedway. And over a period of time, things are going to happen that we're not going to be in control of because it's going to happen. So again, I'm not going to hold the time, I agree with everything that everyone has said. And I ask as a board because like I said, I believe in us, but it's about everybody, not just one group of people. Please keep that in mind. Thank you, guys, and it's good to see all of you.
Thank you.
Counselor, can we, can we cross-examine the witnesses?
Yes.
I have a question for you, Ms. Perkins. Your concern about the traffic at Arbor Creek and I'm assuming that's Ostrville and Rosewood Center Drive?
Yes. And it's also High Endes Drive, I'm right off of High Endes Drive. And that, like I said, it's a, it's a nightmare coming out of there in, in the morning. And to my understanding, I don't know if this is true, I'm being told that, that school will not have school buses for the children to come to and from school. And if that's the case, come on, let's be realistic here. Can you imagine a nightmare that's going to create if that's true? If you already have a level of seven hu, I know what it is already. It, and it's, it's, it's unbelievable.
Do you think that intersection needs a traffic light now without another school?
It should have been there, uh, three years ago. Should have been there three years ago. It's way overdue.
And if the applicant adds a traffic light with the proposal for a middle school, will that alleviate the concerns of the neighborhood if a traffic light is in there?
Now, I don't, I, I don't oppose the school. I'm a believer of education and great of education for our, our next generations. That's important for our next generation. We want them to have the best of the best of the education, but you have to think about the elders that are there and that have been there. Guys, they're scared. Is it right for us to continue to be, to do this and keep having them feel, feel like they're, they can't come outside, they can't come out their doors? That's not fair to them. It, it's, it's not fair. All I'm saying is be fair in developing, continuing to develop in Holly Springs because regardless if we want to admit to it or not, there has been things done that have not been fair. We got to start looking at the residents and not just the one group of residents. I don't want to leave Holly Springs. I love Holly Springs. I can't even get my children out of Holly Springs, they love Holly Springs. And they're grown. I was like, you know, most people leave, leave once they finish college, but they've come back. So that's, and again, those of you that know me, you know, I'm passionate about what I feel about and what I think about. I'm about the people. We got to take care of our residents. Who are the people of Holly Springs? We all are. That's all I ask.
Frances, can I ask you a question? How did you know about the hearing tonight?
How did I hear about the here, uh, here? Because I'm a part of the Arbor Creek. Uh-huh. I'm part of the Arbor Creek Association and we send out information. I mean, the information, we're, we're an active group of people. We're, we're active. I mean, it's, it's not something we weren't aware of, we knew about it, but again, my concerns are not just my concerns, my concerns are for really the others.
Thank you.
Okay? That's what's important to me.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Joshua, Joshua Binkley, I think it is, Binkle, I can't pronounce it. Was there one more person that wanted to be called up?
Kristin Stocking.
Okay. Then let's go to Kristin Stocking. Oh, you're here. Hi, Kristin. Name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristin Stocking. I live at 136 Kingsport in Holly Springs. I'm on the Board of Directors at Pine Springs Preparatory Academy and first of all, I'd like to issue my apologies because I misunderstood or we had so much change going on around this meeting that I was under the impression that we weren't able to have our own support team here. And so, we actually submitted, we've been creating an online survey for all of our supporters because we knew they weren't all going to be able to come here. So, I had submitted to Linda this morning, or yesterday actually, a petition that was signed by five hundred and twenty-nine family members in support of this expansion and also a second petition that we had people fill out that included their address so you could see where they were from and most of them were from town. And that, those signatures were a hundred and sixty-eight more people. And we also have a couple, a few dozen comments that are specific. So, we did send it to Linda, but I don't know that it got included in your packet. It didn't. I see the email, so I'll send it to you again, it's fine. And I also wanted to issue an apology to our neighbors at the school whom I didn't have a chance to meet with. I did want to let the, our guests know that I did sit down with Brad Iskowitz, who's the HOA president at Arbor Creek and we had a great conversation back in February and we've opened up a line of communication between the two of us. We came up with the agreement that we were going to install this light and we talked a lot about the road behind Main Street that was causing a lot of problem and I did some test drives with some parents and we've increased communications with the parents to not go on that road. But with this traffic light, I did want to let them know that we'll be able to turn left out onto Main Street from now on instead of having to cut around, turn around and go through Arbor Creek. So it should really alleviate the majority of any traffic that has to go through that, that neighborhood, which is great. So I just wanted to apologize not, for not reaching out to our Eastern Acres neighbors. I didn't know if there was any kind of homeowners association, but I wanted to avail myself as a good neighbor. We are more than willing and very excited to work with our surrounding neighbors to, to be good stewards and to be good listeners and find out what we can do to support the community better and make sure that our, our services and our resources as a beautiful building will be available to the community. We are installing a full-size gymnasium, which we don't have right now. It's going to have a beautiful, full-size basketball court and we're going to be able to open that to the community at times, which is going to be great. And I just wanted to be here to, I was next door co-working in case I was needed and I said, I think I'm needed because we need a voice to answer some of these questions who's been part of the school since before it was even a building at Rosewood. I've been here, Dick knows I've been here since, um, you know, we looked at that property and said, that's where that school needs to be. So it's been quite the road and, but I know it's hard and it's, change is scary and I know Andy has some comments to make too about the connections to make that a little more clear. But again, I apologize for not having gotten information out to my neighbors, but, you know, we as a town, I think we can all be better communication-wise. This has been a very bizarre situation for all of us. We were supposed to have met on the seventeenth of March and it's been delayed a bunch of times, so, but we are available for any questions and I'm happy to give my phone number directly to any concerned community members to speak to us about our plan. We, as Andy said, we're one of, just a very small number of schools who's just blown it out of the park, blown it out of the park with our performance for our students and just the sheer number of people who are standing behind me right now supporting this effort will tell you that most kindergartners through eighth graders are, they're desperate for some more space. We have no outdoor space at our facility right now except for the younger ones. We have, we just put in a beautiful $200,000 playground that we raised money for, which is also open to the public, but it's not really easily accessible. So if you do have grandkids, you're welcome to come over and play there, it's a public property. So, we wanted to let you know that. But we needed some outdoor space for our kids, so this place, this facility offers us an opportunity to put in a full-size lacrosse field. We're very close to squeezing in a lacrosse field down the hill. So, the older kids will have a place to go out because right now they have nowhere, they're playing in the parking lot and we have some great plans for them. And lastly, I did want to point out, I know Rick had mentioned that we were not planning to have our SRO. I don't think that's accurate. We are planning to have an SRO even with the traffic light. I mean, there's no way we can let that traffic flow by itself. We'll have turn signals and crosswalks there, but I would, we're still going to have a full-time SRO on staff and it's in our budget for the next five years, so I would plan on having him or her out there, but at least they won't have to risk their lives every morning and afternoon. Couple other things I noticed, we are having staggered start times for the middle and elementary, so it'll break up that traffic by at least thirty minutes, so that'll make things a little bit smoother. We've come up with all kinds of innovations to, to make this traffic situation smoother than it is now by far. So, I'm, I'm available for any kind of questions that the council might have and I appreciate you letting me add a little bit to our presentation tonight and thank you for being here to, to express your concerns.
Questions to Kristin?
I have a couple.
Sure.
I don't know if you heard, some of the questions that the neighbors were saying at Eastern Acres.
I, I was with, I could hear everything on Zoom, but I missed a second while I was coming over.
So, the thing that we're talking about is they have a quiet neighborhood where people live there their whole lives and all of a sudden there's a pretty big facility that will be adjacent. And their kids are playing in streets now, they don't have sidewalks, so if you wanted to do a good neighbor, what are, what are the some things you could do? Because it will cost money. Are you willing to spend money to help them make their neighborhood safer?
Well, I do have some clarifying questions that I don't know if they Well, I do have some clarifying questions that I don't know if they can ask me. But I was, our street, Richardson Street, is not going to be cutting through. So there will be no traffic cutting through. I don't know where Richardson, does it pick up on the other side of Casa? Is that what's going on? Yes, I'd rather have Andy talk about, but as far as, you know, willing to spend money. I mean, you know, we've spent $1.2 million to put into this plan that was for traffic improvements. But as far as creating facilities that the public can use and the kids can go over and use, that's always been part of our plan. I mean, some portion of our property is open to the public anyway. It's part of our requirement. Andy, do you know what that percentage is? I think we have to leave a certain percentage available for the public. If we have field space and we're able to do it safely, I'm sure that we would be opening some of that to public. I don't know how that really works. But at this moment, I don't see any traffic actually making it over into the Easton Acres neighborhood because of the stubbed road. Now, if it ever at some point the town decides to open that stub, then we have a different conversation. But at the moment, am I correct in saying that there's no cars coming from Rosewood over into Easton Acres? Is that correct?
I think after, Mr. Mayor, if I can recommend, can we finish the questions for this witness? Then we can have the engineer come back up and re-educate all of us on the traffic situation.
Sure. And I would say, you know, this is a, we're entering, if we do move forward with this, if we're blessed with that opportunity, we're entering into a 30-year bond agreement. And after the first few years, we get to a point with our enrollment that we will start being able to make more improvements on that land. There's a whole third of the land on the other side of the creek that isn't being developed at all. It's going to remain wooded for the most part. And we have visions of putting a theater building there someday or some outdoor amphitheaters that people could enjoy and maybe put on some local productions. So our facility at 65,000 square feet for 500 students, you know, I'm getting a lot of pushback, why do we need such a big building? Well, my vision is because it's going to be a community building. And we're going to be able to rent out space for meetings because we know we have nowhere to meet in the town. And we're going to be able to rent out that gym facility for basketball practices and things like that. So I was very much of a stickler on making sure we made it big enough this time that we could actually do something with it for the community. So between the two properties, we'll have about 31 acres and we'll be able to really get creative for the community with some of that land that's not been built on. So I see lots of great things in the future. We're just, it's just a matter of getting year by year. This is a big nugget for us to chew. We don't get any money from the state for facilities. We have to take it out of our operating budget. So this is a huge investment. But we're doing it not just for the kids, but for the town.
One of the other questions that was brought up.
I have a hard time hearing anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll try. One of the other questions they had is busing. Do you have any plans to have any busing?
We would love to have some buses. It's not part of our model for next year. But at some point, again, as we're able to take down a little bit of that bond, we hope to have some more money towards transportation costs. We were just up at a school near Charlotte this week that had some fantastic school buses and activity buses. And that's absolutely part of our dream for the future. I just can't tell you when it's going to happen. But it's not happening in the 2021 school year. It's not in that budget for transportation. But I will say that there's a very high percentage of our students who do carpool. And that will be a huge push for us is to get more cars off the road and get more people as they get to know each other better. You know, we're only in our third year of operation, so we're getting more and more carpools. And I think that's going to improve in the years to come.
Clarify for me, did you say you had 687 signatures on a petition of two petitions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we have a... The first petition has 529, the second one has 168. And then we have an extra copy with some just written comments with specific.
So, Mr. Mayor, things like a petition would not be appropriate for you to consider at this hearing because it's on sworn testimony?
I was just going to ask you that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's just, we were told that we couldn't bring supporters today. So otherwise, we would have packed this room. So that, I guess that was our way. And even if it's not sworn testimony, I did want to let you know that that was the case. And the parents just did what we asked them to do, and that came from me. So I take responsibility of trying to interpret the status for tonight. So that's how we got approval, support together. Thank you.
Was there, were there any other locations you were looking for for a middle school?
We have looked for so many locations. First of all, before we got the existing property, we had offers on several different properties. One was over at the corner of Holly Springs Road and 55. That didn't work out. It was too small. I think we had offers in three different situations where we looked at models, but they didn't work out. So the property at Rosewood was always for sale, but the per acre price was really exorbitant for us, but we eventually decided that that's where we wanted to go. The middle school, however, we weren't even ready to consider a middle school. We knew we were busing at the seams, but I was kind of waiting to see if that property came up for sale next door. And lo and behold, one day I got a call from our broker, and she said, guess what? It's back on the market. In fact, it had been under contract, I believe, with a developer Andy was working on for some condominiums. Some condo, I think condominium were over there. But that fell through, and so it went back on the market. And we decided to explore it and take it through that exploratory phase, due diligence phase, and see if it could work for what we needed. And again, lo and behold, our waitlist grew and grew. And we kept figuring, kept deciding that this is, we're going to keep opening little doors. And of course, next door is ideal. We really wanted it to be, we wanted it to be right next door because we are a K8 school. We're not a middle school and an elementary. We're a K8 school. So some of the pushback we get from internally is people who want to stay really tiny, you know, they want to stay K8. But we've got a middle school group of kids and administrators who know that these kids need to grow up a little bit and they need their own space. It's hard to have, it's hard to have them so tightly in one building, especially with there's no outside space. So it was just the right timing for us, and we decided to pursue it.
What's your plan if this doesn't go through?
For what?
If this doesn't go through, what's your plan?
If it doesn't go through, we have a certain amount of capacity at the existing building. We have no plans to go pursue another property at this point.
Other questions?
Ms. Docking, since you're up here, I think you've heard testimony both from your own traffic engineer and from the public about the need for a traffic light at Rosewood Center Drive in Ostrville. So I'm asking if you can elaborate a little bit on the proposal for the school to fund up to $150,000 and ask the taxpayers to fund the balance of that.
May I call up Skip to talk with that? And again, I will say that the process went like this. We had a certain amount of budget dollars that we were willing to put toward traffic improvement, and that's a board-approved investment. We had to go to the board and say, okay, we know we're going to have, we know even though it's not required necessarily by legislative statutes, we wanted to be part of this community and do our part and put forth a certain amount of money because we knew, we know there's an issue out there. We have a, you know, personally, I have an SRO out there that I hate driving by. I drive four kids every morning to school, and I don't like them out there. So I was always pushing for some kind of light. So even though it's not required, I said, we got to do something. We got to get, we got to re-stripe the road. We got to get this light out there. Let's figure out how we can use the dollars that we are willing to budget and put them to the best use. The light was one that just rose to the top, even in place of some of the other fee and moves that we were asked to provide. So between engineering and our team, engineering said, well, we would like to put a proposal together for pay up to $100,000 of a $250,000 light. And we said, we'll pay 150 straight out, and hopefully we can get it less than 250 so that we don't have to take any more than we need to out of the public money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I follow.
So it was kind of, it was a team agreement on the pricing, but it basically, it added up to $1.2 million worth of traffic.
I understand your position. Thanks.
Sure. Other questions to Kristen? I know.
Mayor, cheers. We have another witness who has been sworn in. Baxter Walker would like to testify.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Baxter Walker has been sworn in and would like to testify.
Okay, I thought I saw him come in.
Feel free to.
All right. Yeah, stick around. Okay, thank you, Kristen. Baxter Walker. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Baxter Walker, 305 Acorn Falls Court in Hiller, here in Holly Springs. Sorry, a lot of breath. I was watching via Zoom and headed this way here. Kind of thankful not many of Holly Springs's finest were on their route from here, so I wanted to get here in time. So thank you. But I did feel it was important for a parent speaking for a child to speak for this opportunity. So, let me read this. Dear members of the Holly Springs Town Council, I'm a proud pioneer parent. My daughter Sophie is in first grade. Pine Springs has brought her the learning environment that she needs. The curriculum at Pine Springs is both challenging and encouraging. She learned about motor synthesis in kindergarten. I was probably eating glue at that age. While there are many great schools in the area, I view Pine Springs as being the best solution for my child and hope that she'll be able to continue her education at Pine Springs. The teachers and administration are always extremely approachable. Sophie can be a bit of a spitfire at times. However, the school has been able to harness it and turn it into a way that she can best use her energy in a positive way. My heart goes out to anyone in the education profession. However, I can speak specifically about the staff at Pine Springs. They're without a doubt top notch. And my hope is that Sophie can be a student of Pine Springs for as long as possible with the most options of activities available to her. With this comes the hope that the school can provide the best facilities possible to create a strong learning environment for my daughter and other students that are blessed to be a part of Pine Springs. There are many opportunities to adapt to adulthood while in school. In addition to classroom learning, there are also social skills and teamwork abilities that can be developed through sports and other curricular activities. This expansion will provide those opportunities. With growth comes growing pains. However, to best develop the minds of our children, we must weigh the importance and the positive effect of this opportunity. How we leave our town for the next generation goes beyond the physical characteristics of the town, but also for the educational opportunities of its citizens and the results of the developed minds of that generation. This Pine Springs Preparatory Academy provides a fun and safe environment for my daughter to learn. And this expansion is key for this to continue. It is extremely important for me to know that my daughter has the best capability for growth, both intellectually and emotionally. She needs to be at a school that provides that opportunity. This Pine Springs expansion is good for my daughter and good for the children in Holly Springs. Thank you for the consideration.
Questions or comments of Baxter Wise here? I think you may have that in your packet you got kind of late this evening. I have a copy of it too, Baxter, for the record. Thank you. Same words you used. Thank you for that. Any comments? No? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Madam Clerk, anybody else that we missed?
That's all I know of.
Mr. Mayor, there's been a lot of testimony regarding the SRO and the traffic light. And the SRO is here to testify. The council wants to hear any information directly from the SRO about the traffic situation.
Question?
Yeah, you haven't come up.
Answer is yes. And again, name and address, please, Sarge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, members of the town, members of the community. My name is Sergeant Brienzey with the Holly Springs Police Department, duly sworn, January 29, 2007. You know, in fear of regurgitating, which we've heard numerous times, there's an obvious issue with that intersection. I don't think it was anybody's plan to have an officer out there every day. I'm going to remove this so you can hear me.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's the circumstance we've dealt with. The growth of the school, speaking solely on the safety concerns, has caused my officer out there to double stack the traffic coming into the school. What that means is we're monopolizing on the shoulder of the road as well as the turning lane to make that intersection as safe as possible. So I am the creator of said nightmare. You know, the issue we have is that SRO out there is trying to work four lanes of travel because of the way the folks come and go from the school and come and go from the subdivision. Being right turn only out there currently does cause a significant amount of traffic to make U-turns, whether it be an Arbor Creek or a joining subdivision. The reason that we have done that is because as, without having that traffic light there, as motorists try to travel across the four lanes of travel, it's mobile frogger, if you will. There's nothing to make those vehicles yield. Oftentimes, not even with our officer there, do they yield to the officer's direction? Speaking out of both sides of my mouth, Pine Springs has done a phenomenal job of working with us, sending out notices when we ask them to, and making, you know, whatever, assisting us in whatever way that they can. You know, it's an obvious traffic concern. I mean, I think we've heard it numerous times tonight.
Sergeant, do you think the light's needed today, the traffic light?
And do you think by adding the light with a new middle school, that addresses the traffic concerns of today?
Plus the additional traffic that would be generated by the new school with the cars that you see or your officers see day in and day out?
Solely, I would like to say yes, but that's hard to answer. You know, it really is going to depend on how those schools come in and come out. I think if we combine those times at the same time, they would have to stagger entry, if you will. Because if they don't, then I don't even think the traffic light will assume that amount of traffic. So that would be something, you know, we would have to work with the school on. And let's face it, I mean, I supervise all the schools in our town. That's something that would have to do with every school, right? Our middle schools and elementary schools stagger entry as well. You know, you would see Holly Springs Road, Main Street, Aiden Ferry Road all shut down. So trying to see in the future, it would significantly help, but would it completely solve the problem?
Thank you.
Sir.
One question I would have was, I was hoping we would be able to see what the effect of sportsmanship way has had on northbound, you know, North Main Street there, which I believe there are some people in our community that are starting to figure out that that is an alternate way to get up North Main Street onto NC 55. Right. Unfortunately, I'm not sure that a lot of people actually understand that. But I would perceive that as that continues to become a little more known by our residents, that northbound traffic during morning rush hour will hopefully decrease and potentially some of that southbound traffic as well, getting into some of those neighborhoods around there as residents figure out that that's probably not the path of least resistance to get to one they're trying to get.
Right. It is possible that that will definitely be an option for them for sure. You know, we have to weigh everything because traffic is going to detour wherever it's going to detour. And then we're left to deal with the consequences of those detours. So that is an option. That is an option that motorists can take. You know, and hopefully during those times, there won't be sporting events going on. You know, maybe not during the daytime, but maybe in the afternoon, that's going to be a concern. A lot of gifts, you know. I don't like gifts more than, you know, what I can tell for sure.
Other questions?
Sergeant, you said that we're dealing with.
I'm sorry, sir.
I know, I'm sitting over here away from everybody else. It's like, I'm always office side. You said that you deal with traffic at all of our schools. Does every one of our schools in Holly Springs have an SRO assigned to directing traffic?
So that is a bifold question. So yes, every one of our schools have an SRO. Do they always direct traffic? Answer to that would be sometime. Depending on the need, you know, the primary function of an SRO is for the safety of the students and for the staff members and everybody inside it coming to and from that school. It's not necessarily designed specifically for directing traffic. That is something that I believe, you know, we as a town and the police department do as a courtesy to assist with the ongoing growth of the students and staff coming from the school. However, I wouldn't submit to you that that's the optimal solution.
Okay. So for example, I've heard from parents in 12 Oaks that Oakview does not have an SRO routinely directing traffic during normal beginning and end of school, correct?
And that is correct, right? Like, you know, obviously, my primary directive to my officers are you have to deal with every situation as it comes, right? Those officers are in the school, dealing with whatever it is, that particular school has a positive meeting that stops cars from making, you know, substantial changes. So if we don't have to do that. So, if we don't have to do that, then the position for those officers would be inside the school, dealing with the safety of those students going and coming from the school. Those are the times that we're most concerned about the students, when those doors are open and closed, people are coming and going. So, you know, they have to use their judgment and what they're currently dealing with to make that decision on what's most important at that time. But with Oakview, it's lower on the street, you know, concerned.
Okay, and so, I'm not going to, nobody will hold you to this, but in your best guess in the future, with the implementation of a signal, you still believe an SRO would be needed to direct traffic on Main Street for the two Pine Springs schools?
On a daily basis? Probably not. I, that's a terrible answer, but you don't know. Anytime you change a traffic pattern, where there's going to be a period of time where probably it's going to be like, oh, we made it worse, until people get accustomed to that traffic pattern, you know, traffic accidents, people growing accustomed to the new traffic pattern. Signal timing is a big thing at all of our schools. If it's not timed just right, you're only getting two or three cars out and we've got a disaster there. So, getting us over that curve, we're probably going to have to pay some significant attention to that area. But, you know, if the traffic light goes in, yeah, I'd say to go and hope it do that, no. You know, they're going to be where they belong inside the school. Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
At this point in time, do we have questions now for the applicants? Would you like to do that?
Mayor, is this the end of the public statements?
All right.
I had received a text at 4:30 from somebody that said they sent a notarized statement that I have not heard about tonight. Would that still be valid? What time did they have to send notarized statements to you?
Until 5:00. Will, Mr. Bill H., I never see his name right, Brad Wasoski?
Yeah, thank you. He texted me around 4:30 that he had sent you a notarized.
It was in the packet.
Yes, there's the letter in your.
So, do we hear those as well? Or did everybody see it that it came in that late? Because I did not see the 5:00 o'clock one. Checking if everybody else, did everybody?
I saw it, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we saw it.
I have some questions for engineering before we move back to the applicant. Rachel, can you just quickly clarify and spell out for me in the simplest possible way what they are not agreeing to as far as what we would normally condition that are not allowed to condition as far as the road widening goes? I see that the road is fully built out, but then we're saying that they're not contributing to widening and just restriping. So, what exactly are they not committing to?
We can start with that on North Main Street. There would just be additional pavement here in this area to complete the second lane to meet half of the ultimate cross section. So, in the traffic study, it was shown that that additional thoroughfare widening wouldn't necessarily provide additional capacity at this time. You know, we tried to get that across the development where we can so that in the future, we can have a full connection that would provide additional capacity and alleviate congestion. But for this particular segment, that will not be accomplished, you know, at this time.
And it's something the town will have to work to fund later on?
That's correct.
Do you know the approximate cost of a project like that in today's dollars?
I do not. I don't know if the project engineer has looked at that cost with this project since it wasn't a part of the scope.
For that signal, I appreciate it, but I'm very kind of questioning whether that signal is needed now. I think a lot of residents in that area would agree to that. The way that it's being funded, they're going to fund the design and then would it be a fee in lieu for the construction?
No, so the applicant is doing the design and would be responsible for the installation of the signal, including the mast arms, the pedestrian crosswalks and pedestrian signal. And so, they are taking that on. They would be reimbursed up to $100,000. At, you know, the terms of that reimbursement would have to be finalized.
Has there been any fee in lieu for that, for a signal there from any developments in the past?
There have been. We have a couple smaller developments across the street that beyond school age daycare in Arbor Creek had contributed to that signal. And then we also have a new professional office center in Rosewood Center Development that is contributing toward that signal.
And how much was it collected here in the area?
I believe the daycare paid 5,300 toward the signal and the professional office has about the same contribution. So, maybe about 10,000 total. And I just wanted to clarify the, this, I don't know if you can see my cursor, the concrete median is to prevent left turns into the new access off of North Main Street. So, this would just be a continuous through lane and would continue to be that. I just wanted to clarify that. This is the new access, so the right turn lane is coming southbound to get into the site. But there would not be any left turns allowed into the new site access. And one more clarification, Richardson Street, as shown here, this is a new two-lane cross section that terminates within the property. So, this portion of the street does not extend beyond this property line. So, the Easton Acres neighborhood is further south. There's about 300 feet from the property line with the project to the neighborhood south, the Easton Acres neighborhood. There is existing right-of-way in that 300-foot length, as it's shown on the comprehensive transportation plan, to be a future connection at the time that the, you know, southern properties would redevelop. So, there is no plan or project funded at this time for that connection.
So, to clarify, that right-of-way would not be utilized unless the private owners living in Easton Acres chose to sell to a developer and have their land developed, at which time it would be built through. There would be no connection to that time.
That's correct. And then further, McLean is not shown today on the comprehensive transportation plan to extend and connect to, you know, any additional proposed street to adjacent development.
Now, our ordinance would ordinarily require a connection to a sub-street like that, but the issue is that Catha, I think it's Catha there, is not stubbed, right? It's just woods today.
Correct.
And so, is the reason that we're not requiring a connection because that piece of it is not stubbed? Or is it a funding consideration that the applicant has raised?
So, the standard requirement is for the street to be constructed and stubbed to the property line. So, it's not a standard requirement for them to go off-site and extend further to Catha. It was looked at and discussed with DOT as an alternative to this new access off of North Main Street. It was actually a DOT preference, but the town, you know, had a lot of conversations between DOT and applicant to push to get the access up to North Main rather than going through the neighborhood onto a street that is not today constructed to accommodate the additional traffic.
Thanks.
Any more questions for engineering?
Can you just briefly talk, I mean, talking northbound on North 55? As you go north there, basically, as far as development goes, I mean, we're talking about, even if we were to expand that, there is no current or future plan to expand NC 55 northbound, or not NC 55, but North Main up to Sunset Lake. And beyond that, even more problematic is that that becomes Apex. And Apex has had a bunch of buildings go in on either side of North Main and they have not done any road improvements along there at all to widen that section. So, even if we were to widen just a small portion here, we'd likely complicate the traffic, correct? Because you're just going to cause more queuing in that area right in front of Easton and this area, because it's going to bottleneck right back to Two Lane. And there's no foreseeable future to ever get back to expanding, correct?
Correct, so on the comprehensive transportation plan, North Main Street is shown as a four-lane median divided thoroughfare, you know, for the full length. However, in this area, you know, this has not been fully built out and it would just be that additional pavement off to the side, I think, to your point. It would not create a beneficial addition or accommodate additional capacity. And there is no timing, there's no project funded at this time to create a larger cross section or a larger length of that cross section that would accommodate additional capacity.
Right, but even if we wanted to do so up there beyond Old Smithfield Road, that's not our jurisdiction.
Exactly.
That's Apex anyway.
That's correct.
Right now, it doesn't appear that Apex is doing anything with that because, like I said, they've put multiple developments there and that road has not been widened at all with those developments that have found.
Correct. Rachel, one of the testimonies asked about having the light not go straight into Osterville, but stop like a left or right instead of going through, stop the traffic going to Arbor Creek. Was that ever discussed with engineering?
Can you repeat the question?
Instead of the light, having people go through Osterville Drive, that they can't, like keep the traffic that are all coming out of the school, not go through Arbor Creek to help keep the traffic down? Because that's part of the problem is they have a lot of through traffic. Just using it as a way to, you know, go through without actually going on Main Street because Main Street's a backup.
Okay, I see, so you're saying that the folks coming out of
Yeah.
Rosewood Center would shoot across and go through the neighborhood?
They're saying not have folks go straight across.
That might be something that the officer would have to interact during the times of carpool. I don't, you know, we'd have to talk to DOT and look at the signal design and the timing options as to if we could restrict that movement during certain times. But that's something we can definitely keep in mind and take into consideration as we look at the signal design and kind of how we operate during that, you know, the peak times for the school.
And one of the things that came up was the bypass. What would be consideration for another entrance on off the bypass to the school instead of having folks on Main Street?
So, this is a restricted highway that is owned by DOT. It would not be supported to have an access for a single development. Most likely, any additional access off of the bypass would have to be, you know, to serve a more regional need.
Any other questions, Rachel?
Sorry, Rachel, one last question, I think I missed. And just to that point that Councilman Kelly just brought up in the testimony that was provided there, is there a possibility, we've done this in other parts of town, where we don't allow anything other than right in, right out, much like we're doing to the other access to the school? And would that be a potential solution at Rosewood and Osterville to make that intersection also a no left in and a no left out? So, you're now forcing people to come out of Rosewood or the school from the other alternate exit and go southbound on Main Street down to Sportsmanship if they're trying to get back to the north? Or conversely, if they're trying to get there to come in via Sportsmanship up north? Continue on that way, but they're never able to turn left in there northbound and they're not able to turn, you know, left in there or turn left out of Rosewood, which alleviates that concern we were just talking about as well. Not only that, but also alleviates the concern of the SRO trying to mitigate all that traffic going into the flow of rush hour, northbound or southbound, whichever one it may be.
And are you suggesting that with a signal installed or as an alternative? Okay. You know, I think it's something that the transportation engineer would have to look at and model to see what that would do to the traffic pattern and congestion. If we're limiting this full access, you know, with a light, the signal should work to help the flow of traffic and alleviate some of the congestion we're seeing. So, I don't know that creating or preventing left turns in or out of Rosewood Center Drive, how that might impact the congestion on North Main Street. But, you know, we could certainly explore that option and see, you know, what the data analysis would show. But without that, I couldn't say how that might affect the traffic.
I'm mostly looking at the left turn inbound going northbound on 55 in the morning traffic. You're not mixing school traffic with rush hour traffic trying to get up there. So, if you want to enter to the school there, you go up Old Smithfield Road, turn right and then come back down. There's a solution that potentially prevents a bunch of the traffic and a lot of the queuing because we know that it's not going to get built up and get pulled out any time soon.
What about the folks in Easton Acres? They want to go left and they have a hard time doing that. What would be their alternative if they want to go towards Apex? Would we say you have to go, take a right, go all the way down the Sportsmanship Way and then go back? What is their solution?
So, I believe they have a full access here today and they were indicating that they're having trouble taking left out because of site distance issues or
And traffic.
And traffic. Right, without the connection from Richardson to Catha, there's no alternative means of access, you know, into that neighborhood at this time. The comprehensive transportation plan does show that future connection in the hopes to allow for an additional access, alternate route. As far as a signal at that location, you know, at this time, we don't have any data analysis or traffic counts at that point. And so, I'm not sure that it would be warranted and approved by DOT. We could check the distance separation to see if it's possible and have a conversation about that since it's been brought to our attention at this time.
And if there was a need for the school to evacuate, how are they coming out? So, Richardson Road is blocked off. So, how would you evacuate a school that's out?
So, this access off of North Main Street, it is a right in, right out. But they do have two points of access. So, Rosewood Center Drive, they have their driveway connecting here at the signalized intersection or future signalized intersection. And then they have the secondary access located off of North Main Street. So, I could ask the applicant to speak to what they've looked at as far as evacuation routes. I know the MSTAs has requirements for stacking within the site as well. So, they would likely be able to share more information about that.
Okay.
With the signalized intersection though, I mean, there's going to be a gap in timing and spacing of cars. So, conceivably, to get out of Easton Drive Road and Catha Drive, it's going to be much easier with the signalized stopping and spacing the traffic, correct?
That's correct, so that should alleviate a lot of the backup that we see today and should keep the flow of traffic more efficient.
Other questions? All right, do we want to bring the applicants back up again for questions?
I have a question for planning around light to the adjacent neighborhood with the parking there. I would think that that has to be welded. What does it have to those neighbors?
So, the town does not require that parking areas have lighting. However, if the applicant does decide to add lighting, they have to have a photometric plan submitted and approved by town staff. And we would review that to make sure that the minimum light levels do not bleed onto adjacent properties. So, typically, that's something that we don't see until the next phase of construction drawings. Duke Energy will provide that photometric plan and planning staff will review it to make sure that no more light bleeds onto adjacent properties that our ordinance allows. I will note that we do have higher light levels that are permitted for athletic fields. So, if that future recreation area does have an athletic field in the future, they could add lights that have higher light levels. There are conditions that you can only have those higher light levels during times of tournament or events. But I did want to make the council aware that that is an allowance in the video.
And we had questions about the notification. Can you speak to when the local neighbors were notified or not notified?
Yes, so the town's development procedures manual, in accordance with North Carolina general statutes, requires that the town notify all directly adjacent property owners of a pending public hearing. The town typically sends out public hearing notifications to a 200-foot distance away from the property. So, we exceed the minimum requirements from North Carolina general statutes. So, only those property owners who are within 200 feet of the property were notified. In addition, the property was posted at all the adjacent right-of-ways. So, anytime a So anytime a public street touches the property, we put a posting to notify the adjacent property owners or anybody driving by the site that a public hearing has been scheduled. Those signs have been posted since February 25th prior to the original public hearing that was scheduled on March 17th. We've sent notifications out for all three of the potential public hearing dates. March 17th, April 7th, and then the public hearing tonight.
They were notified, postcards?
They were notified three times with letters and twice with postcards.
Do you know how many homes that was?
If I remember correctly, there were 40 or 41 addresses on the notification list.
Other questions, Ashawn?
Ashawn, can you just explain with the current zoning, as we heard from the applicant, that it was other developments that could go in here with an R20. Can you just explain to us briefly, you know, what the density could have been or could be for this property? I shouldn't say could have, couldn't have been, but what it could be? If this doesn't go forward and another development does come in there, how much could we look at for a future density of houses in there?
So the R20 zoning district is primarily a single-family residential zoning district. So we're looking at a density of 2.25 units per acre maximum that would be allowed. However, the R20 zoning district also allows for special exception uses for other non-residential land uses such as schools or churches that may be compatible with residential neighborhoods. But because of possible external impacts, they are special exception uses to allow for this public hearing process to occur. So that is what has caused the public hearing need tonight is that this is a special exception use in that zoning district, but it is otherwise primarily a single-family residential zoning district.
So earlier we heard somebody say they thought the condos were coming. That was not, that's not zoned for that, so that would have had to go through a special exception use, right? For a density of condominium?
For a higher density, the property would have needed to be rezoned.
Right. If there were another sort of development there, like single-family homes, would they be required to make the necessary improvements to Main Street as part of another project?
I will ask Rachel Jones in our engineering department to come up and answer that question.
To answer your question, yes, any other development would be required to do that.
Would they be required to vary the line as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They would be paying this.
It doesn't meet the distance requirement.
That's correct. The length requirement is not met. The property frontage is not long enough to meet the standards that Duke requires. So that's the fee and lease collected to be part of a larger project once it meets the minimum length requirements that Duke Energy has in place.
Hi. All right, I want to ask again, do we bring the applicants up now for some final questions?
I just had a few, ma'am.
Sound good to you?
I had a few questions today.
All right. Would you come back up, please? And if you have any statements to make before the questions, that's fine.
I was going to say, would you like me to answer some of these other questions?
Sure.
It's kind of hard because there's lots of questions trying to write them down to make sure we answer them. And Rachel answered some of them and Sean answered some of them and.
Do you have some answers to the questions? Absolutely.
Yeah, I would say, I want to reiterate what Rachel said, that I'm going to take this off because you guys can't hear me clearly.
I give up on mine.
Um, the extension of Richardson Street is an extension of Catches Street, but it doesn't tie in to where Richard Street is now. That right of way is just dedicated. It's all, not only is it all wooded, but there's actually a stream that runs through it. So developing that piece is going to be very, very difficult. We did look at it as an option and one of the reasons we did not choose to take that route is because we didn't want to route traffic through a neighborhood. That just didn't seem to make good sense for anybody. To elaborate on what Richard Street is, where, you know, we say collector and all these big terms, essentially what it is, is it the same road that is Rosewood Center Drive? It's a, what we call a two-lane road, which is actually kind of an extended width. It's about 33 feet wide and has sidewalk on both sides. And so that gets extended all the way through the property. So the sidewalk on both sides of that road will be stubbed to the property line to the south. And in event that everybody in Easton Acres decides to sell and somebody redevelops it, or if the town comes up with a project and wants to extend that, or however that gets funded, I don't see that being a likely scenario. But just want to make that very clear, that this Richard Street does not stub out and we do not dump traffic into Easton Acres neighborhood. That does not happen here. So I don't think you'll see, I don't think Easton Acres is going to see traffic flowing through there because there's not really any way to do that unless everybody that lives here drives Jeeps. I also don't think you're going to see a lot of parents parking in Easton Acres and taking their kids to school for one because in order to do that, you'd actually have to park on Catha because there's no way to actually park on Richardson because it is all wooded with a stream there. So you'd have to park on Catha, walk through the woods and walk all the way up Richardson Street and then walk all the way up to the top of the school. And there's about 55 or 60 feet of elevation change between where that road stubs out at versus what the elevation of the school is. So it would really be more of a pain in the butt for parents to do that than it would be to sit in carpool and actually come through the way that they're supposed to come through. Can I go back on these slides just so I can point to some things?
Sure.
All right. Part of the reason this street was designed the way it was designed is because we knew that the extension of Richardson Street being extended here is probably so far off in the future that it might not ever happen. It's why we put this drive down here and it was put there for public safety so that we wouldn't have to put a big cul-de-sac bulb down here. So fire, EMS, everybody could come down here and use this to help turn around. And it's also why we put it down here so we could do stacking and have our stacking come down and follow this route and take the longest path possible to the building. So our stacking actually starts down here at this entrance, not right here. And it funnels all the way through the site and all the way around the front of the school. Pick up and drop off is there and it funnels all the way back around, back this way. So we're actually providing a lot more stacking and queue than what we're actually required to based off the number of students and what MTSA actually requires us to do. I don't know if this was a specific question or not, but this entrance here was put in for public safety purposes only. It was put in there and it was put in as restricted access because we didn't want to add congestion to North Main Street and add a actual full access interchange between Rosewood Center and Catha, which I believe DOT has identified those two points as their future signalization points. But we've also put gates here that can be closed so that they are non-operational during school hours, meaning we don't want parents coming in here to pick up their kid in short-circuiting or backing up traffic on North Main Street. The idea is that during school, during school, they'll be open for them to come in if they need to pick their kid up. But during carpool hours in the morning and afternoon, we'll close the gates that forces parents to come all the way around and not back up traffic on North Main Street. Does that make sense? What we didn't want is because we have such a long queue to get into the school to drop your kids off because we need that queue for stacking. But if your kid has a fever and you have to pick them up or if you need to get to the school and drop off a homework or lunch because there's no cafeteria, we didn't want parents to have to drive all the way through here when you could just come in here and park and then leave. The traffic signal, I think the question was asked about why it's only $150,000 contributed to that. A couple of things to consider here is there's been case studies with DOT that show you're required to basically contribute your impact towards that intersection. I think right now the SR officer actually said, you know, basically that intersection needs a signal now. So the school is contributing more than what their actual impact is at that intersection. I think that's worth noting.
But they didn't do anything the first time around.
What's that?
They didn't do anything the first time around.
I don't think it met the warrants for the first school. I'm not sure about the TIA, the first school because I wasn't involved there. So, but at this point, and Josh, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it actually meets all the warrants as it is now. But I would also add.
Is that a true statement, sir?
So, sorry. So signal warrants, NC DOT prefers to see a longer period of heavy traffic or very heavy traffic during a shorter period. So typically we look at different warrants. It's a peak hour, it's four hours of heavier traffic, or it's eight hours of sort of significant. So when we did the original TIA, it wasn't close to warrants. NC DOT did not want to signal. Now, because of the heavy volume, even though it's during a very concentrated period, you have residential on one side, you have a school on the other. That AM peak hour, they're trying to do things at the same time. It's a heavy time period, so that is why DOT was accepting of a signal at this point is because the increase in traffic, just seeing the delays that would be expected and just the general safety. A signal is going to provide a safer way to turn off of Main Street, onto the side streets or turn off of the side streets. One of the things I was going to mention, I know that was brought up a lot, is the difficulty because of heavy traffic along North Main Street. Whether the school, you know, continues with this or not, that traffic's there. I do understand, looking at existing, it doesn't matter if you're coming out of the school or the residential, it's a failing level service currently without the signal. And that does usually cause people to take chances and be a little more aggressive with turning out when they're waiting for long periods. So with the signal, they know their time is coming, they will get a green. You usually have a safer area because of that. So a lot of this is, it's just the heavy traffic, it's out there now. I know you brought that up, is this a problem now? It is. It's a failing level service for the minor streets. Providing a signal out there is going to help that a lot and it's definitely going to help safety out there.
And if that elementary school wasn't there today, arguably, the level of service would be better and the issues wouldn't be as compounded?
That is, that could be. You might still have a failing level service because of the heavy traffic on North Main and the residential there. It wouldn't be as bad. That's definite, anytime you add traffic to anything, it gets worse. But it's quite possible, a lot of those streets along there, they might have a failing level service. They're just not warranting signals because they don't have those thresholds that NC DOT likes to see.
Do you have a percentage of proportionate impact that got to that $150,000 number?
I think the school was actually, if I remember correctly, about 42% or below. And that was.
Just the middle school, what's being provided?
No, 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 the complete school and that was looking at the peak periods alone. So the way you do that is you don't say, what is it off of this street? Because it's traffic from all directions. So we looked at the peak periods, which is the worst case. If you looked at 10:00 AM, the school would be 1% or less probably. But we're looking at the worst time. And I think the, both schools combined were 40, approximately 40% of the overall traffic there.
Okay, thanks. Other questions?
I'd like to know, you were talking about possibility of buses. How would bus, where's the bus lane in this plan?
Well, we don't have a bus lane in this plan. I think that was, we don't have a bus lane as, because right now there's no plans to have a bus fleet. I think part of what Kristen was referring to is that there's plans and talks to possibly work with the folks at Ting about a park and ride type situation where people could park at Ting in the morning and we could bus them in. But you wouldn't necessarily park the buses there on a full-time basis. We do have double queuing lanes all the way from here, all the way up. So they're double stacking the cars all the way back. So it is possible if we had those buses, we could dedicate one as maybe a bus lane or a carpool lane or of some sort and do some signage to do that in the future if that becomes a reality.
So we're building a school without thoughts of a bus lane?
Charter schools typically don't have buses, so it's not a typical protocol for the school. It's just not something the way that this operates.
Other questions? If you have other comments?
And I would also add that Kristen didn't mention that we had looked at the property. So being a professional in the consulting business, I did look at this property for a private developer. They did actually come in here and look at it and they looked at it as a mixed-use property. It would have to have been rezoned, as everybody's pointed out, but the mixed-use designation follows the town's land use plan. So we did look at it as a mixed-use for that, which puts some retail up there on the street near North Main Street and then townhomes throughout, including this side of the creek, so utilizing both sides of the property. So when it comes to traffic, I think when you have a 23-acre tract of property here in Wake County and everybody wants to be here because, I mean, the community is great. So I think that some part, this property has gotten lots of looks because of its size, its connectivity to major thoroughfares and also the availability of utilities. Something eventually is going to go there, I think, as far as traffic goes. At least with a school, you're going to get non-traditional peak hour traffic there. You're going to get that peak in the mornings and the afternoons, but your afternoon is just going to be shifted. It's not going to be the same as, say, on a Saturday where you have a shopping center and townhomes and you have all these conflicting movements. The traffic is generally regulated in the same direction and each and every day and you kind of know what you're going to expect in those times. I think it's also worth noting that the TIA, when it was done, Sportsmanship Way was under construction. It wasn't open yet. So you can't really model how that works yet. And then now, we couldn't even go back out there and model it because right now we're in the middle of a pandemic and there's not that many cars on the road and it really wouldn't be an adequate model. And I think those are all points worth taking. There's going to be some, there's going to be some adjustments, as the SR officer said, that we're going to have to make. But I don't think it's the school's intention to create a traffic jam at the intersection and upset residents.
I understand that. I think the last time when we talked about bringing in the show lane coming in, they were saying there wouldn't be traffic issues than there were. So I do have concerns about traffic. Here in this proposal, it says that adequate land is purchased by the school, however, to maximize the use of the site. There seems to be quite a few exceptions. Is that, is that a good place for a school that size in the middle of a town near an old neighborhood?
Again, I think that schools in near neighborhoods traditionally have done well and it's in proximity to the existing elementary school. And the transition between parents and multiple parents have multiple kids at different grades and it allows them to be in the same location. I think traditionally you see a lot of middle schools and high schools put together or elementary schools and middle schools put together. So my estimation, I would say yes, just because of the precedent that was set by allowing the elementary school there in the first place.
Would you, but typically not beside an old neighborhood that's been there for folks who've lived there for a long time?
I'm failing to see the connection of how this will impact that neighborhood because the connection's not being made there. So I'm not sure how to answer your question. I don't think there's going to be as much impact on that older neighborhood. I think the misconception was that Richard Street was going to connect into Catha and route all the traffic through that neighborhood, which is not the case.
What about the noise?
I mean, I would say that we're providing all the buffer we can and that's why we stuck the building up towards the front of the site, North Main Street, and stuck it in there and kept the trees around the perimeter. And we tried to keep all the trees as much as we could around in these areas and we kept all of the trees and we've not done any development on this side to try to keep the noise level down.
But you said that you might develop that in the future, right?
No, 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 not this piece here, not for the school. I said that if we did a private development, it looked at developing this piece. I think it was noted that there was two tracts of land because there's two public notices. There's really not two tracts of land, there's one tract of land. But there's a stream that runs right along here that essentially bisects the property and makes it seem like it's two tracts. It is not, it is one tract of land. This whole area on the west side of the stream, between the stream and GB Offer Highway would not be developed.
So where's the recreation area?
It goes right in this area, right in here.
Right beside those homes?
Well, there's a stream right here with a buffer along it and then also a perimeter buffer along the property line as well. And I also add that the area that's available for the recreation is not big enough for a football field. So it's not large enough to do major school sports. And I would let Kristen talk to it, but I don't think that's, as a parent at Pine Springs, I don't, that's not their mission. The mission at Pine Springs is not athletically based, it's more academically based. There's not enough room, available room in here to put a football field in there. There is enough room to put a smaller soccer field or a multipurpose field. And I think the school has played around with some ideas of possibly doing that and seeing if community interest needs it, almost how Ting is being used some. But honestly, we're still working out those. I think it's room for a lacrosse field, but as far as like a full-size track or a football field, it's not a large enough area to do that with.
So not lacrosse?
Maybe. It depends on how, lacrosse fields and soccer fields have different dimensions depending on which leagues and which age group you're going to play them on. So I can't say for sure. Is it MLS? No.
Other questions? Or comments from the applicants that we have not touched on? Is anything else?
I have one regarding parking there. Part of the reasoning for the parking waiver was that there was going to be a difference between when we were going to have parents there and teachers and students there and that the parking capacity wouldn't be needed. But now, the document mentioned that possibly having special events there, renting out the space, having a full-size gymnasium and meetings.
And I think that's the point is that if you were to rent the gymnasium out, if that was something they chose to do, you also wouldn't have teachers and students there. You wouldn't do those multiple times because you wouldn't want that safety interchange. If you're going to rent out a full-size gym versus maybe upward or some other basketball group that would use it, they would be likely doing that on a Saturday or a Sunday where school's not in session.
Okay, so the anticipation is that these special events would be less capacity than we would see on a normal schedule?
I don't think you would see a school rent out the gymnasium or the athletic field when school is in session. I think that's a safety nightmare.
Anything else?
And I would also add, we have full pedestrian connectivity between the elementary school and the middle school. So if, for say, there's an event, we would, I'm assuming the school would work to, if there's an event at the middle school on an evening, there would not be an event at the school, on the elementary school. And you could park in elementary school and parents could walk through because there's full pedestrian connectivity there. There's also going to be full pedestrian connectivity and lights at the signal to make that a safer intersection at Rosewood and North Main Street so that you actually can get from the Arbor Creek neighborhood to Rosewood Center with pedestrian signals.
Are you aware that there were concerns from some of the businesses in that?
We are. And I can let Kristen come up and speak to that a little bit because I know she responded and talked directly to that owner.
Okay.
I'm curious, I mean, I think it's.
Council, can we take that or do we just have to deal with the facts that we have presented to us? Because now it's kind of hearsay.
So to the extent she's going to testify about something that somebody else said, that would be incompetent.
I do have, I did present to the engineering department and planning department the correspondence between the school and the owner of that business. So I'm not sure if that would have been presented as public record, but just for historical sake. sake.
Oh, okay. So, so Kristen, how do you speak that what we've heard is, as evidence-
Sorry, do you mind?
Is, no, no. Is this, the dance school had issues, Arbor Creek has issues and the neighborhood beside has issues. So how do you feel about being good neighbor when neighbors all around are all struggling with the school being good?
Um, I understand the struggle. I mean, there's, there's no doubt change is scary for, for these people too. And the, the dance studio came in after we were there, so she knew what was, that we were going to be good partners. I think we do send a lot of business our way. So, um, when I did speak to her on the phone, um, or on the email, she said, you know, I think the letter came across a little bit harsh. You know, I, uh, she said she had no other way to express herself except through writing. So, um, but she was amenable to the opportunity, to the, um, resolutions that I offered her that we would help her pay for some signage for people not to park in their parking lot. Um, I told her about the restriping. She didn't know about that. She didn't know about the light. So for me and for our school, I think it's a matter of communication, even with the HOA president at, um, Arbor Creek, when I first walked in, he was a little bit on the defensive. But once I showed him our plan and walked him through it and he gained some understanding and I get it. I know how people turn right off on the main street and turn left to this neighborhood and whip down that street to get up to Sunset Lake. Um, I get it. So once he saw the plans, he said, the light will solve our problems. So to me, it's a matter of communication. I've opened, I've given my cell phone to all these people and once we've opened up the communication, the comments have stopped.
So that, um, HOA president sent in a note today and there's a line here that's Brad sending in a testimony. He says, "We fear an expansion of over 1,200 students at a school with no public transportation and a dead-end street is dangerous and creates a hazard for the Arbor Creek community and Pine Street." That was a statement we got today.
Okay. Um, I'm not surprised that he said, said that he's concerned about traffic, but when I met with him in person and showed him the plan, he did not have that concern. He backed, he said, "Okay, we support it." And I told him that we'd work with him on some other crosswalks in the neighborhood and things like that. So I think it's still going to be a concern. He wants to make sure it's done right and he wants to be in, at the table and talk about it with us, um, when we do present, um, any changes. So, and I offered that to him, so.
But can I also add that, I mean, I, I think we also heard the neighbor commision acre say they're not opposed to the school outside of the traffic running through the neighborhood. And I think we've adequately addressed that. So I don't know that it's fair to necessarily say that we're not being good neighbors when they didn't say they opposed the school. They opposed the traffic being brought forth on their neighborhood, which is not the case.
I heard, um, I heard that they still had issues and they felt like they would like to have had more conversation at this point. So that is premature to say that they approved the school or not at this point, given what I heard tonight.
Yeah, I'm just saying what she said, I'm not necessarily opposed to the school with what I heard.
One person said that.
No, two. Um, I listened, but just to be clear, Mr. Iskowitz is not here. And so what he said in the conversation is hearsay, but his signed affidavit said that the proposed traffic mitigation efforts are insufficient and that he still fears that the expansion of the school will cause burden to his neighborhood. So I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah. Got it. Just try to get this wrapped up as quickly as we can. We got two hours and 10 minutes so far, which is deserving, but-
And, and one thing real quick, I know, I'm trying to be brief with all this. I actually have the page.
I understand.
Um, we did do the traffic analysis with no stagger of the schools to kind of look at a worst case. That's how we typically do that. Then we kind of make the recommendations. So when they're talking out staggering the two schools, we're looking at both of them happening at the same time. Um, you know, the, the signal, it, it shows it's going to operate better than existing with the putting, installing the signal there at the, the intersection. So that's for both sides of the traffic. Um, it will be better than what is currently going on out there now. And that's assuming both schools are operating at the same time. We don't have that stagger. And it sounds like that is something they're working towards to help traffic even more staggering those times.
I understand. Anything else? Have a lot of information.
With applicants, no, I just have one question.
Sure.
I have a question for staff and I'll be there.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your input and your patience. Question for staff? Which staff?
I'll just ask it generically, um, because it's probably Rachel Randy. I mean, it, it's, do we have any, do we have any idea? I mean, I know Councilman Barry asked this previously, but we have any general idea of how much we have taken in for fees and lose for that light, that signalized light at that area? Obviously Arbor Creek is a huge contributor to traffic at this, at this intersection. I don't know if there was anything taken in from a fee and lose from that development. Um, if we're talking 42% overall for an elementary and a middle school, that's $105,000 for 252, $250,000. And if we're putting in 150, then that's more than their fair share right now compared to, it sounds like even all the other corresponding businesses that are in and around there that contribute to this traffic. We've not taken hardly any fees and lose, maybe 10 grand is what I kind of surmise. Is there anybody else that we potentially have taken fees and lose for this traffic signal? Because it sounds like we just didn't adequately capture fees and lose for some major impact from a, like a big development like Arbor Creek.
I'll ask Ms. Jones to come up as well and, and help answer this, but yes, I think as I understood from her testimony that, uh, we had roughly 5,000 and some odd dollars from one and then, and likely a similar amount from a second one. I don't know if some of the developments that came in, if they would have come in at a time that were pre, uh, a time when we would have required fees and lose. That could be the case why others didn't pay in, but I don't know if Ms. Jones can clarify that.
And Mr. Harrington's correct. The, um, original development predates a time where, um, we were expecting a signal to be warranted at the intersection and also, uh, predate the time of collection for fees and lose, you know, towards that improvement. So as we've seen the need increase, we've, you know, started to prepare for, um, that signal to be warranted and try to start funding that need.
All right. You've heard from a lot of people, heard from the planning board. Are we at a point where we're going to make a decision?
I was going to make a statement. One of the things we read on here is the proposed use will not be injurious to the public health, safety, comfort, community, moral standards, convenience or general welfare is one of the things we have to just, just try for findings of fact. Whether it's a good school or not a good school, to me, it's not part of what we're trying to decide today. It's like, will it building this big in that location, the traffic issues, um, not be injurious to public health? I have not heard that tonight. I've heard that it would be injurious to the safety, comfort, community, moral standards, convenience or general welfare. So I, I do not feel that we've, um, finding the fact of the narrative.
Anybody else want to make a comment at this point?
I'll, I'll just take an alternate view on that from an injurious perspective. So this is why I ask the questions about what else could be done with that 23 acres. So, uh, we're not here to consider a different proposal and see if you know of something else to be used there for that 23 acres. But with our 20 lot, even if you look at setbacks, requirements for single-family housing, you're going to have a lot more interaction there. And there's literally zero requirement for residential to residential back-to-back for buffering unless I'm off on that one plenty can tell me, but there's very little, there's about five or seven feet.
Five foot open buffer.
Yeah. So five foot buffer. So there's zero buffer effectively, um, between the neighborhood of East and, and anyone else who wants to build on this property, which is already legally zoned for our 20. So, and if it comes through as a non-special, non, non-special exception, then we have to go just based on what's in our DDO for an R20. And we're not going to have this quasi judicial public hearing for injurious, uh, status for one of those developments in there. So I, I take a slightly different stance on that from the injurious perspective. Those are the comments, um, from the community there. I think that, you know, what they could have developed next to them would be greatly more injurious if that's what we're considering, um, for the residents concerned there from a school that operates for a portion of the day and is dark most of the evening, um, or dark most of the hours of the day, other than, you know, 8:00 AM to maybe five or six o'clock in the afternoon, depending on sports events there. Um, so that's, that's one part of, you know, the facts of injures to public safety. And from a traffic perspective, again, I think you put a development there of our 20. I'm not sure that it's going to change much in what we've already heard from the facts of what we have along this road frontage here is even if they did do a portion of that road frontage, uh, right there in that very small section, it doesn't change the overall status of, of North Main Street. It's not going to improve the traffic flow from a four-lane, North Main Street along there anytime in the near future. And certainly unless we can get Apex to do something, it's not going to change the status of that traffic that flows all the way up to, uh, William Street, uh, the intersection there. So, um, I'm not really sure that the injures to public safety from the traffic perspective is, is, is meeting the bar for my perspective.
Okay.
Different views?
Let me piggyback on both of that then. I will, um, say that we are evaluating this proposal in front of us, not comparing this proposal to a hypothetical development which hasn't been proposed at this point. So we don't know what we put there. We're just evaluating how potentially injurious this would be to the community. But your second point is well taken. The traffic on Northern, North Main Street is not getting better anytime soon. And as somebody who has had to drive his daughter from sug farm to a dance recital at, uh, Hope Church and had to take 45 minutes, um, it is a mess. Will the signal change that? My, I think we've heard testimony that it will help. Will it help to the point that we can mitigate the effects that the school has already had and that expanding the school would have? I'm, I'm not convinced about it. The, the biggest sworn testimony that, that we've received is to the neighborhood adjacent, but especially in, uh, Arbor Creek where they see a lot of traffic and they're worried about the traffic spilling through. And the reason that that traffic is spilling through is because North Main Street is too congested and it's quicker to cut through that neighborhood. Will this traffic signal make it easier to move up and down North Main Street past the signal? I'm not convinced by that. And I don't know if the, without having a traffic signal design in front of us, if I can go to these HOA residents to voice their concern and saying that this will fix the problem that you're worried about. Um, I think, just for the record, I think it has to be said that, that the applicants have gone above and beyond what is required of them, that the statute does not require hardly anything of them and they have given more than nothing and they should be commended for that. I do not know if it goes far enough to spare the community there from any injury in the development.
One more comment, Dan?
I'm somebody that usually has a lot of words and, uh, I'm pretty conflicted. I'm pretty conflicted and that's rare for me. What I keep coming back to is our hands are tied on some of the improvements and I'm not thrilled about that at all. I'm not thrilled that the General Assembly has decided to take a stance that makes municipalities saddled with unfunded taxpayer liabilities to fund transportation improvements that we don't have money for, quite frankly. We have the streets reserves balance that's dwindling every single day and we're trying to pull every penny we have to pay for the projects that we already have approved. And $100,000 is a big amount of money, especially when we go through, you know, handing out money in, in other situations to do other things. Now, you know, we go through with this, we're going to have to come up with $100,000 out of next year's budget in a budget that's already going to be short on sales tax revenues and in a budget that we're going to be challenged to really make ends meet on. Now we're going to have to find another $100,000 to make this project work. I'm not thrilled about that. Um, but we're also, we're also tied by what our friends on Joan Street allow us to be doing here. And I recognize that that's, that's the law that we're, we have to operate under. And then I think about my kids and other parents that have kids and how we as a group can have the foresight to think about the future and what we need, you know, publics, it's not a public school, but schools in general, whether they're public or charter schools are a big part of a community and we have a growing community. We've been growing every year since I've lived here. We've got more and more kids coming into neighborhoods. Uh, we've got more and more kids that need to go to school. We have schools that are capped year after year and prevent people that move into neighborhoods next to schools from going to the schools that they can walk to because, well, they're full and they can't get any more people in there, so they got to bus them to other places. So I think there's a need to have more schools and to have more capacity. And I think part of our job is looking into the future and trying to figure out, how can we make our town better and how can we leave a mark on our town that's really going to have a lasting impact on our community now and our community in the future? And that has to do with the generations that aren't even here thinking about this stuff with the people that are going to benefit from it. Is it going to be a disaster on North Main Street? It's already a disaster. The light's going to help. Is it going to solve the problem? I agree with Councilman Rolf. It's, it's probably not going to solve the problem. It's going to make it better. Um, but only, only so much of that is in our control. And, um, I wish the General Assembly would allow us to do more and require more of the developer, in this case a school, much like we would in a residential subdivision, but that's, that's not the case and we have to stay within those facts. I do agree with Councilwoman Kelly that some of the facts presented in, in their application are shaky. Um, but I keep thinking about the future and part of, part of what we do is look at today and how do we support the people that elected us to be up here? But part of it is also having enough foresight and courage to look at the future and figure out what we need and where we're going. And that's why I'm so conflicted about it.
Councilman Barry, I just wanted to add, I think, um, your comments about looking to the future. I mean, it's, you do need schools. I think it's the location of the school. I just wanted to add, in your perspective, looking forward, I agree with that. I also wanted to look back to how we got to, to build this town. And this is impacting the neighborhood. It's been about a long time to help build our town. And I think that needs to be recognized and part of the injury of, to that community. And that is, if I think about the folks that elected me, those are the voices I want to represent.
Counselor, a question? The, the term $100,000 has come up several times. Is it, uh, legal for me to ask the town manager his perspective on the $100,000?
So if, if the council's considering, uh, a set of facts which state that, uh, for the traffic signal, uh, it would either be, uh, in keeping, uh, with, with the premise that it would not be injurious, it would be true.
Right.
But, um, I think it's appropriate to, um, to find out if the town manager, uh, afford the care of the traffic.
That's kind of where I'm at. Would you mind, uh-
Sure, Mayor.
Commenting on that?
Yes, no, happy to. Um, in the event that council were to approve the development, uh, proposal that's before In the event that council were to approve the development proposal that's before you, what I would infer from that would be a desire or an expectation then to move forward with the concept of the signal. That would require, as mentioned earlier, a hundred thousand dollars as part of the conceptual part of that partnership. There's always an opportunity cost with anything that, that you consider. And, but, but going forward, if, if that's the decision of the council, I would infer from that a desire and an expectation that in the budget that you would see next Tuesday evening, that it would include that hundred thousand dollars.
Any further questions or comments? Anything else, Sean?
If the council's ready to consider the motion, I do just want to reiterate that this motion is considering a resolution that contains findings of fact and a motion to approve the special exception use variances and waivers. And I would let the town attorney correct me if I'm wrong, but the special exception use just requires a simple majority. However, the board or the, the town council is sitting as a board of adjustment. And since we do have one member who has refused themselves, the variance requires a four-fifths vote of the board of adjustment or the town council, which would require all four members of the town council to vote in the affirmative approving the variances in order for them to be approved.
Counselor, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And basically what's being said is the ability to build the school would depend on the special exception use findings of fact, which is a simple majority. You know, however, the variant, individual variances. So you could approve the land use but not approve these variances if they fail by a four fifths majority.
So our first motion is for, repeat again?
It is for the findings of fact and to approve the special exception uses, special exception use variances and waivers.
And that has to be a majority?
The, the special exception use needs to be a majority. The variances need to be, the variances need to be unanimous. So if there is going to be a differing vote on those two items, we may need to separate those out from the resolution that's supported.
Yeah, if you just want to tackle the variances first, unless if we don't get unanimous, then the resolution will fail.
So that would be motion number one?
The first variance is for the setback reduction along the future Richardson Street. That would be variance nineteen V A R T C O two. The second variance nineteen V A R T C O three is the maximum building height increase from thirty-five feet to forty-two feet.
The question before you on variance is whether or not you heard about the material and actual evidence, the findings of fact. Yeah, again, hardship, whether they're all, and if it's the least the easiest fix for that. I'm not sure what we heard as far as evidence, reduction of setback.
It's a reduction from thirty feet to ten feet along the proposed Richardson Street.
So it's not off North Main, it's off Richardson Street, the new street that's in the back?
The, the street that runs
Thirty feet. It looks farther away than ten feet.
The, the setback would be for any sort of structures, so from the street to the parking lot in the street to the new recreation area. The parking lot is currently twenty feet from the new right of way. The recreation area is ten feet from the new right of way. So the minimum distance that they're asking for is ten feet.
So it's really not the actual building that's causing them to ask for a variance?
It, it's, it's the parking area and the future recreation area, which our U D O considers parking to be a structure.
Okay. Thank you.
If you haven't heard, that was ours was that the road, you know, at the long park yard before it got changed. To the large empty right of way, future right of way. So if you, if council wants to determine whether or not that variance allows the factuals. Unanimous to that one, just move on to the next one.
I guess, okay. Does someone want to make a motion?
So you're saying the road, Richardson, that end piece, you're saying instead of ten feet, instead of having to be thirty feet, they want it to be ten feet. And at the other side of the ten feet, is there a private residence that's on the other side of that ten feet?
I can show it a little bit more clear on the map here. So this is the proposed new Richardson Street. This dash line that is right under my cursor is denoting the twenty-foot line. So the parking lot will be within twenty feet of the right of way. This dash line on the other side of the road that is currently under my cursor is denoting the ten-foot line, which you can see there's a retaining wall here. And then this is the future recreation area. So the setback is along the east and west side of Richardson Street where these two dash lines are. It does not impact the future connection of Richardson Street going south.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So the future recreation area, so there is going to be one, or we don't know and it could be?
It has been presented to staff as a potential recreation area. We have no further details.
Would that require a development plan if it come, if they were to develop it into some type of recreation area or?
It depends on the extent of the recreation area. However, if, if this is something that is concerned to the council, you could, in finding your facts for the special exception use, determine that you don't have enough information on that recreation area and add a condition of approval that would require them to come back for an amendment when they determine what that use will be.
Given that it's so close to houses, it worries me to not have more investigation on that.
Thanks. The recourse is the playing condition, ask it to come back. If it brings comfort to the variance overall, then that, that would be our recourse.
Time confuse us to this conversation. As it applies to the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, council, we have three options. We approve the motion for the resolution unanimously. We deny it by any vote. Or we separate out the variances and vote on them individually. Is that what we're discussing?
No.
No?
We're voting on the variances as a package.
Okay.
That has to be
Is that correct?
Or individually?
That has to be unanimous, for all the variances. And then the other one is just for the motion.
The resolution is for all the, all the
Whether or not
Waivers.
Yeah, there's a resolution for variance, waivers, and special exception use. Special exception use is simply with simple majority, the variance is required and the use abilities are you know, I just suggested that you took one on the decision, you're not unanimous on one of them.
And how many, how many variances do we have?
Two.
There's two.
Yeah.
Two variances, correct?
Seven waivers which are packaged with the S E U, but two variances.
Or we can vote on the two variances.
I'm awake for the recess. Technical recess. Go ahead, John.
Well, not sure if, you know, we need to hand out the first variant, let's say it's still three on the variant. Let's all vote the findings of fact. So with the first one, the bridge in the street, the development, because the evidence that you heard was about a retaining wall. I'm trying to summarize the evidence for you. But so the, what you heard from the applicant was, was the necessity and the vote required for the development in that setback from make a motion to the process back and just go down that.
Okay.
And you said it's because it, it needs a retaining wall? I hadn't heard that.
I seem to remember that testimony, but it was a year ago.
Okay.
The testimony is based on the topography and having enough usable space to put any type of recreation building there requires that.
And the streets are located in two different places. So you have a street stub that's here existing and you have this one, the right of way on Catha, which is causing the design of this street and the hardship around that structure to fit in potential recreation.
Really the potential is, in my opinion, from the facts, looking at the picture and looking at the topography and the wetland area that's depicted there. I mean, there's already a significant buffer from, you know, adjacent properties to the south. It's way more than
So this would be the only thing at this point we're voting on?
For this.
Yes. Correct?
Some of them would like to make a motion to accept the findings of fact relating to the setback of Richardson Street. We make a motion and second it and then we can vote on whether or not this
Thank you.
Permission, I make a motion to that variance.
Your second?
Second.
With the name, say it all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm still thinking. We have two variances, right? I have probably the second one more, so I'll say aye to this one.
Okay. I think I heard unanimous. Am I correct? Okay. The second one, John, please.
The second one is relating to the building height. They're requesting a variance from the maximum building height from thirty-five feet to forty-two feet.
I'll be same process.
I'll make a motion to find and make and accept the findings of fact for variance nineteen V A R T C zero three to allow a variance to an increase in max building height from thirty-five feet to forty-two feet.
Must have made the second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Sure. Comment.
Are we recessing, Mr. Mayor, at this point?
I'm not sure what we're doing.
Just trying to determine whether or not we want to go forward with the other issues in the resolution. And if you give a minute. So why accommodate them just to see if you want to go forward with the fact that that variance has failed.
Now that variance has to be unanimous. Is that still correct?
Yes.
Hmm, okay.
Counsel, I never probably asked this from a, from a fact perspective, but I just want to make sure that we're all on the same team here. So that forty-two feet versus thirty-five feet is maybe that from the lowest point to the highest point. And that's regardless of its overall status based on the topography. So that is on the low side of the topography, the three-story side of the backside of the building. Now, the front side was effectively still less than thirty-two feet. Am I correct in the fact? I got that right before I voted on it as well.
Yeah, and aside would be half because the topography allows for that bottom floor to actually be kind of buried in a way into the
Yes, I just want to make sure I have it correct. I mean, we're only talking about a variance for that bottom portion on the backside, correct? The rest of this living is that correct or not?
Oh, is it John? I'm sorry.
The applicant has said that that is correct. Having a little bit of difficulty reading the elevations to confirm.
Yeah, I guess the only reason I was asking that is I'm just, I'm just curious, is that's, is that just the way our U D O has written? It doesn't, it doesn't accommodate for pitching topography like that. I mean, so we're overall looking at, you know, the height of the building or construction or, you know, how it looks in relationship to traffic going to buy it or whatever else. But obviously, that's clearly not the case from the backside.
Typically, building height is measured from the grade at the front of the building. And we allow for changes in the topography to, so for instance, if you have a house, we measure the height of a house from the front of the house. But if you have a, you know, walkout basement, we wouldn't measure height from the walkout basement side. We would measure it from the front side. I, I would need to reexamine the plans in closer detail than what is on the screen. But it was identified as a staff comment during the review process, so I can only ascertain up here that the variance was identified as needed.
Catch a stop.
Is that what you want?
That would be my personal preference.
Do we need a separate motion on that?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Try to stay away from Councilman Kelly here as much as I can.
And, and the town attorney as well. I got that feedback.
Yes, I would prefer that that's what we've moved forward with is requesting the staff look at that and reanalyze whether or not this is a required variant.
So effectively table the decision on the S E U and then answer the question on the variance that we already voted on. And if it's deemed to be a moot point, then we proceed with the S E U vote. Since it's not needed, that variance, or, and if it is needed, then we're right back in the position we're in right now, right?
Right, which I don't know if it matters tonight to any of us, whether or not we proceed forward or not.
Right, yeah.
I'm trying to proceed forward because I'm not sure that that's going to change anything for me, I mean, with the overall project.
Yeah, I'm with you. I just, I'm just trying to figure out what makes the most sense on, does it make sense to bring it back after we get the answer to that? Or just go through the vote and then get the answer later? I don't know what makes the most procedural sense.
You know, I would, I would think the table is, let staff look at that, see if that was a correct application of the U D O variance request for the height and then bring it back in.
Okay.
Do you need a separate motion on that?
A motion table.
Just want to make sure. Not trying to be problematic here. I just want to make sure that we're only considering that variance to table and not the entire project. Because otherwise, we're opening up a whole nother public hearing, a whole nother
I think so.
Well, you've had your public hearing.
Okay.
To close it.
It was, I, I think the fact of the vote. You know, once you entered your deliberation stage, you closed the public hearing. So you wouldn't get another public hearing and you just resume that in two weeks on the
Deliberation.
On the remaining waiver and special exception.
Okay, so we need a vote on the remaining waiver first?
My suggestion would be, it would be maybe most efficient use of your time to table it, let, let staff look at that.
And then come back for the rest.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Mayor, council, just for clarification, that would come back at your first meeting in June? Was that June second? What's next? Counselor, I'm asking you.
So there is a public hearing on a bond motion which, the public hearing will allow
Wait a minute.
Bond for the Pine Springs Craft Dairy Academy, which has no financial impact to the town. I would suggest you move to table this one as well.
So moved.
Second.
The main signal fair.
Aye.
Opposed? Just for clarity, because now I'm confused, which is not hard to do. What happened to, we were going to vote on separate issues and we're going to vote on, and we tabled the whole thing?
Yes, sir. Once, once you got to the building height issue and you didn't have a unanimous vote on the building height waiver. The project as, as designed would, would fail, would probably fail and have to come back and bring your shorter building. Councilman McGrath raised the issue on whether or not we, in review, applied the ordinance correctly, the ordinance requirement correctly by measuring from ground level at the front to the top, as opposed to ground level at the bottom to the top of the front. So I think that's a good point and I think that's something we can look at in more detail in fairness to the applicant. Likely that Sam's gonna probably run a court and rather than run a court after we did it right, as opposed to running court before we may have not done it right, so.
Appreciate that. So, so when we come back, again, I think it's a little confusing. When we come back after we tabled this, which we already did, then what do we do at the next level? What's the next time when we come back? What is going to be the exact issue?
The remaining variances in this waiver and a special exception use.
The waivers and special exception use would be also tied into the table.
Yes, sir. It's going to be everything remaining that you need to do to either approve or deny this project, with the exception of the Richardson Street setback issue.
And those other two votes would be not necessarily unanimous, am I correct?
The special exception use would not need to be unanimous. The, the question is whether or not it's injurious to the neighbors in the background and whether or not it fits with the neighborhood, basically. That would be a majority vote. The waiver and the waivers and variants would be a four fifths.
Would be a four fifths? Yeah, okay.
Waiver will be a simple.
I got it, I think. Okay. Sorry, we thank you, counselor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could request a consideration on an agenda change. We have the following item is a recognition of Chief Herring. And he does have his mother and his family, and one of his family members has a broken ankle. And she's been waiting very patiently as well since seven o'clock. And I'd just like to request if the council would consider moving that item up to immediately right now? And we could cover that and then come back to the UDO item.
I think it's up now anyway. Let me see.
Well, next item is. We have another public hearing before that, but I'll make it a motion to advance item eight for recognition.
Second.
What made, say on favor.
Aye.
The only thing I can think of worse than a broken ankle is.
For three hours.
Jeez. Okay.
Do we need a motion to readmit him, Counselor?
Yeah, I think your motion was only to recuse him for that one.
Item, okay. So we're good.
It'll be reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
He's good to go.
Somebody light the peak signal, watch the next guy.
Do I make a motion?
No, we're good.
We can just bring him back, right?
We're waiting for him to come back from wherever the bar is, back from his car. There he is.
I see pillow creases on his face.
There he is. Go ahead, Pete.
I see pillow creases on his face.
There he is. Go ahead, Pete. Come on down. We apologize, or I apologize, we'll put that way.
I told you ten o'clock, I think, but I was, I was joking when I said ten o'clock, but here we are. Yeah, I was joking when I said it, but here we are.
Now we know, now we know who's the problem.
Yeah, it was completely my fault.
All right, you might have guessed what this is all about. And agenda item number eight is recognition of the police chief, John Herring. And I have a couple of comments I'd like to make as you're being seated. First of all, thank you for coming and thank you for being patient with us. Been a long day. I want to tell you a little bit about Chief Herring. This is not a roast, it could be later, though. Chief John Anthony Herring. This is your recognition and your life. And I think it's probably because of the timeframe, the only, the real athlete among you is probably the chief. So I would ask him to come to the podium, please. That's great. And if anyone from the family would like to join him. Catherine, would you like to join him? And the rest of you may sit if you wish, or you may want to come forward, up to you. Whatever you feel like doing.
Always been a trooper.
It's just kind of appropriate, when we have family there, they kind of all come on. And mother comes up too, yay. So this is the whole family, John, and I trust you left the two dogs at home, am I correct?
We did.
John started his twenty-six-year career on April 1st, which as I understand is April Fool's Day? Is that correct?
Yeah.
I don't think that means anything. Nineteen ninety-four, at a very young age, maybe ten, twelve, however old you were, fourteen, whatever. And you joined, as I recall, Chief Cecil Parker and Rick Leach, that was it, correct?
That was it.
So you were third person in and that's period. Holly Springs is a little different town than as I recall, am I correct?
You are correct.
Thank you. And I thank you for always being accessible. I have John's cell phone number, and I must admit, I've used it a couple of times. However, if I called him on a weekend, this is true story, I either got him on the boat, at the beach house, but my favorite is, John, where are you today? It was a Saturday, as I recall, and he said, I'm at Times Square in New York, why are you calling? I goes, oh crap. Am I correct on that, John, did I not call you?
You're making it sound like I'm a world traveler.
And Catherine says, no, you're not. Anyway, at this point in time, I know it's getting late and I apologize for that. I'm going to turn this celebration over to our town manager, Randy Harrington, who has a few other things in mind. And you look very nice, by the way, as does your family.
I appreciate that. Thank you for those comments.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And as I'm talking here, I'm going to ask if our assistant town manager, Daniel Weeks, will start to make his way up, as well as Lieutenant Robbie Parrish. But one of the, a couple of comments, first off, when I got here, I think, you know, everybody knows that the chief and I have a similar last name. His last name is Herring and my last name is Harrington. And so from time to time, the chief has been called Manager Herring. And from time to time, I've been called Chief Harrington. So as far as I'm concerned, I just assume, take the chief's role and go into retirement here instead and swap seats, so.
We have to swap salaries.
Yeah, right, well. Sure, no. Yeah, but, well, you know, from what I've, what I've known, though, during my almost two years here, is when I, when I came on board, I quickly knew that we had one of the top law enforcement officers here in the state, right here in our hometown of Holly Springs. And that was really great for me to be a part of when I came on board here. I've known the chief to be an individual who has just the utmost, highest level of integrity. He's somebody who focuses on always trying to do the right thing, and that's tough to do. And I really appreciate his thoughtfulness around that. His concern for his staff, who many of them are here in the audience and many others are listening on, and who also will hear about this tonight. He has a great deal of care for his staff and their well-being. His level of professionalism, always wanting to be at the high, at the, at the top bar and, and carry himself in a way that makes the profession proud, in a way that makes our town proud and our community proud. He's, he has certainly a passion for policing, the policing profession. And all of this, I've come to learn that, you know, we've certainly had a great one these past twenty-six years and certainly a great one here as police chief over these past fourteen years. And under his leadership, I mean, he's really just taken the department and made it, you know, a premier department in this region and in the state. And attaining the number one safest community for a number of years, including the last two consecutive. So that's no easy feat, and that takes a, certainly takes a village and a community, and it certainly takes a police chief to lead those efforts that are necessary in the policing operation to make that happen.
Here, here.
And he's a pretty good bad dad joke teller, which is something that a few of us in town really appreciate. But one of the things that I do want to recognize, and perhaps even more important, is the chief's family. And we all know that being a police officer is a tough job, it carries a number of risks. Being the police chief is an extremely difficult job. There's a lot of community pressure, there's a lot of policing pressure. And that's something that spouses carry as well. And I want to recognize Catherine and thank you for sharing, John, with us for all these years. I want to thank the family and the two daughters, Chiefs $2, Taylor and Kaylee, for being here as well and for what you have done to support your father in a profession that is so rewarding, inspiring and, and meaningful for our community. Thank you, Mom, as well for being here and your support in supporting your son, being just an outstanding police chief and someone that, that makes this community proud. So with that, let me invite Daniel Weeks to say just a couple more comments and we want to present a plaque. And then Lieutenant Parrish has another award he'd like to present. Daniel Weeks.
Oh, no. He was trying, he was trying to look at the plaque. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Again, my name is Daniel Weeks. And we wanted to take a few minutes tonight to look back at three snapshots from Chief Herring's career here in Holly Springs. And I believe this first one was from late nineteen ninety-three. At that time, the Holly Springs Police Department had less than five sworn positions, including John Herring and Rick Leach, who are pictured here. I believe this was after they graduated from basic law enforcement training, again, back in, in late fall of ninety-three. Yes. Catherine was the photographer. I, I like all the, the pretty leaves on the, on the ground there. Just to give you an idea, the, the police station back then was basically, and we're guessing here, about a fifteen-hundred-square-foot cinder block building that no longer exists in town, but it was on, on Main Street many years ago. The town population back then, about two thousand people. The tax base, one of the things that the police department is charged with doing is overseeing the safety of the tax base in town. It was, it was less than one hundred million dollars, which sounds like a lot, but it's a lot, a lot less than we are today. And town square miles, just shy of five square miles that, that had to be controlled. Okay, if you jump forward to roughly halfway through John's career, to October two thousand and six, is when this picture was taken. This was around the time that John was named police chief after the split. We, we used to have a public safety department where police and fire were merged. There was a split in oh-six and John Herring became the chief of the police department. Twenty-three sworn positions, which you can see here in the picture. Some, I want to point out, some of these individuals are in the audience today. So I won't call their names, but there's one guy here on the far right that looks, looks like he could, uh, he's a pretty mean guy here.
Really?
Oh, so the, the police station at this point in time was the, the current coworking station. We call it the old police station, it's about thirty-five hundred square feet. So we needed some more space back then. Town population eighteen thousand, tax base had grown to one point two billion dollars at that point in time. And the square mileage of the town had really grown over thirteen square miles. And then finally, the last snapshot, I don't even think the chief has been able to see this picture yet. This is the first time. And if you notice, we keep having to zoom out with each of these as the department grows. But this was March twenty twenty. I'm hoping this was pre-COVID, because there's a lot of folks that are very close in this picture, early March, hopefully. And again, as, as Mr. Harrington said, Holly Springs at this point in time has been named safest town in North Carolina by independent organizations numerous times, eighty-six positions within the department. The new law enforcement center, twenty-eight thousand square feet, town population forty thousand. It's come a long way since that first two thousand person mark. Tax base is now six billion dollars and total square mileage of the town is, is eighteen square miles. So what will we remember Chief Herring by when he's out there fishing on his boat, reeling in, reeling in all the big fish? And we're still here, working tirelessly away here at town hall? Well, to me, he will be remembered for, and to use a metaphor, writing the ship and charting a new course after the two thousand and six split of the Department of Public Safety into two separate departments of police and fire. From what I have always been told, after assuming the post of chief of police, John's leadership style transformed department morale for the better and helped create a unified sense of purpose and mission. For leading a department of law enforcement professionals who have helped guide Holly Springs to becoming the safest town in North Carolina on numerous occasions. After finding ourselves in the top spot for a few years, it may be easy to start taking our safety for granted, although we need to consistently remind ourselves that this outcome does not happen by chance and is a direct result of the hard work and dedication of Chief Herring and his team over the years. For his emphasis on the importance of physical fitness, not only for his officers, but also the community through various events like the law enforcement torch run, hot dogs for hoops and partnerships with Special Olympics. And for the value Chief Herring has placed on the dozens of community engagement events conducted by HSPD throughout the year. Chief has always valued the concept that building social capital in the community during good times leads to a stronger, more supportive and connected community when times are not as easy like we find ourselves in now. And last but not least, Chief Herring will be remembered for winning every single year the poker tournament at our annual retreat, every year.
Without cheating?
Without cheating, I don't think. So finally, now somebody else will have a chance to, to win, hopefully, next year. So Chief, thank you for all that you've done for us over the years. And on behalf of the mayor, town council and the manager's office, we would like to present you this plaque. And the plaque reads, presented to John A. Herring in appreciation for twenty-six years of dedication and service to the town of Holly Springs, April nineteen ninety-four to May twenty twenty. And with this, before we let him say a few words, I want to invite up Lieutenant Parrish.
We're ready.
We've been together a long time. Hey, thank y'all for, that's too loud, I apologize for everybody on Zoom. Thank y'all for allowing me the opportunity to come up tonight and speak on behalf of the department and, and share some words about Chief. Hold on, man, I brought my pad, y'all better watch out, I've been taking notes all week. This really wasn't the venue that I thought this would go down at. Because of COVID nineteen, we've had to make modifications on top of modifications. And at some point, we will have that retirement ceremony, I promise, even if it's in twenty twenty-two. We will have it, I promise. And for the record, we took this photo on March first, it was a Sunday afternoon, I very distinctly remember that day. But it was before all the COVID stuff started. So with that said, I just wrote down a few notes here. I promise I can stand up here and talk longer tonight than y'all probably have time. Your last council meeting, and I started sending emails, I'm like, hey, we got to get him up there. You know, it's kind of like the mafia, you try to get out and we brought you back. But another town council meeting and we might not get out till eleven o'clock, but that's okay. As I stand here tonight, like I said, I'll try to be brief, but how can you sum it up? How can you be brief with someone who has spent their entire career here at the great, this is a great place, at the town of Holly Springs? Numerous times over the last few months that we've spent together, and Chief and I, we've, we've, in some form or fashion, we've spent almost twenty years together that I've been here. And we've had a lot of good times and when you were on the road, we'd be out at night and next thing you know, we'd be chasing the car and they would have to explain that or why we did certain things, but, you know, times have changed. But I can, I can remember a lot over the last few months of spending time with Chief and talking with Chief. He would say things like, this is my life's legacy. And this is my life's work. And leaving here, and we all joke about in law enforcement, it's time to retire, run, like, run, get out, because you've beat the system. But we've talked about that and Chief has said, I feel like I'm leaving here at a good time, but it's my life's work and it's my legacy. And I want you to know from the bottom of my heart and the other members of the department, many of them are standing here tonight, you're not leaving your legacy, you've created a legacy. And that legacy will live on for at least as long as I'm here and as long as everybody on that back row is here, because it's had a ripple effect in all of our lives. From two thousand and six, we sat right here in this room and I sat right over there in that corner when they said, we're splitting the department and we're going to make John Herring the interim chief. And how exciting that was for me and several people that are here that shared that feeling and that emotion fourteen years ago. And it's never gone away. And we sat right here that October, whenever they swore you in as chief of police. And that feeling and that emotion never went away. And I keep looking back there because everybody's at the back of the room. But I can tell, I could stand up here and talk for hours about the many selfless acts that Chief has done over the years, the dozens and dozens of programs that he's come up with. And sometimes we would go, I don't know, not that it worked, but okay. And sometimes we would go, oh, not that'll work, but okay, Chief said it will. And we'd do it, and it would work. The programs that he has supported, that we've brought ideas to the table, and Chief would say, "Show me how we can make it work, and let's do it." I mean, it's countless. The hundreds of hours spent after the normal business hours of eight to five that Chief has put in extra time. The mayor was talking about answering the telephone. I'm going to keep calling you, and I won't call anymore in the middle of the night, because I know Catherine is like, stop calling here in the middle of the night, because we've done that a lot through the years. But I'm going to keep calling, I'm going to keep aggravating you, and I hope maybe you'll continue to answer the phone. Hope you don't change the number on me, but if you do, I know where you live. But all those things and all those accomplishments, and the many firsts, and the work, like I said, that will, that will carry on, and the values that you've instilled, and the leadership, and the ethics, and the integrity that will carry on through everybody that still works here, and probably for the next generation, too. There is one accomplishment, I promised that I would kind of tell an old story, because I'm known for telling stories, and we tell a lot of them. There is one accomplishment that I don't think that you're going to be able to meet, but you've surpassed it, but there's still time. And I distinctly remember one day it was snowing, and we were working traffic, there was a school bus, and it had rode all messed up. And we were dealing with a unique set of circumstances in a different time. And when we got through getting hollered at, I'll just leave it at that. Chief and I stood in the back parking lot, and he said, "You know, all I ever really wanted to do is retire as a sergeant." And some days, that probably ain't a bad idea. And we've joked about that through the years, that, you know, that's really, that was the goal when he came to work here, was like, maybe one day I can make sergeant. That was my goal when I come to work here. And then all these years later, it's grown into what it's grown into. So there's still time if you want to demote, but you know, they're going, HR is going to take, Miss Eric, I know you're watching, they're going to want to take 5% at least, so just stick it on out now. That's about all I got for tonight. I got some more I want to tell later, but I don't want to keep everybody, but thank you again. I do have one thing here that I'm going to present to you, and I apologize, but with the world being shut down, this is about the best frame that we could get our hands on. But we'll take care of getting this, getting straightened out for you. But what this is, is the Old North State Award that is signed by the governor's office. And this award is bestowed upon public servants who have put in at least 20 years in the North Carolina retirement system. Now, we know Chief is knocking on the door at 26. He's going out with all the accolades, but this is the best I could do for right now. And there's more coming, because you ain't gone yet. There's, there's some things going on next week that you don't know about yet. But I'll tell you about that tomorrow, maybe. But I will give you this, thank you for everything you've done for me. Thank you for everything that you've done for the members of the department.
If you don't want that bag, I think Daniel Weeks wants it back.
Thank you, Robbie. I think the board may have a few comments before you talk, because we're going to let you talk last, how would that be? And I know you've got a big speech, but not just for a minute. And I think the board would like to say a few things. So I'm going to start with the board at that end and say, "Do you have a few brief comments at 10:15?"
I'll be brief, since I'm the shortest one here, but Chief, it's been a pleasure. I can only imagine, you know, 26 years doing this, and you've built a fabulous structure and a fabulous foundation for all of us to live under and benefit from with the things and the safety we have in this town. And that's obviously attributed to you and the members of the town, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, I've known you a long time. I've been here your whole career, living in this town.
You have.
I have always felt safe. I think the thing I think about you, your heart and your family and all that you have done, and how you have shown me the softest side. I know I've called you as well, because you are approachable. And what I really started to appreciate as member of the council is how much you wanted to learn and grow and be better all the time. And that takes a special person to do that when you've been in the world for a long time. So we are a lucky town to have had you, and I'm the lucky person to consider you my friend.
Thank you so much.
Going to rely on my notes a little bit, because I did, I did prepare some stuff, and it's been a long night, so I want to make sure I get it all out. I first crossed paths with the chief when I was just a resident and HOA president who had to deal with some neighborhood speeding issues that were persistent. And we had several complaints, and I decided to email him. I don't even know if it was his real email, it may have been just generic Police Chief at Holly Springs, you know, whatever. And much to my surprise, like a day later, I got a phone call back from the chief. And you know, this, this was five, six years ago. And we had a discussion about those issues and how HSPD could help out and what they could do, what, you know, what's the, what's the law? And how do we really work as an HOA, and how could we work with the police department? But after that, it was a common theme here, but after that, I saved his cell phone number in case I ever needed it, even then and now, but I've only ever had to use it a few times. Fast forward to the last two and a half years being on the council. When I was first elected, he arranged for a tour of the Law Enforcement Center. And we had a discussion with, he had a discussion with me about your priorities and philosophies for how you run the department. That's something I'll never forget, just the leadership qualities that you possess and how you have driven that through the entire organization. It reflects highly upon your character and the department. At numerous times, I've witnessed the chief's commitment to public service ethics and using otherwise stressful moments to promote education and safety. You were probably most surprised with my budget questions and the types of vehicles and radios we were buying, and why? Why do we buy Dodges instead of Fords? Why do we buy Cruisers instead of SUVs? Why do our radios have to have so many frequencies? But you always made the time to prepare and answer every question that I had. Some of the most important traits someone in your role can possess are responsiveness and an ability to listen to people, whether it's elected officials or citizens, and honestly evaluate their issues and concerns. And you set the bar for that role. I'll miss your dedication, your passion for our community, your humor, but I'm grateful for your friendship, and I look forward to your council for many years. Daniel Weeks spoke a little bit about, you know, the annual event that takes place, but I think it's only appropriate if I end on arguably the best accomplishment of my own service, in that I will forever go down in Holly Springs history as the last person to beat you at the annual poker tournament, Town Leadership Poker Tournament in your final year as the Chief of Police. So while Daniel pumped up your ego, let's not forget who won a couple of months ago.
Oh, I didn't forget.
I was thinking that.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Who was cheating?
You're a fantastic police, police chief, but a hell of a poker player. And I will, I will remember that one for a while. Congratulations, thank you to your family for the long service and dedication to our town. Good work.
Thank you so much.
Chief, I'll be brief. You've made our job and those who've come before us and those who've come after us very easy in so many ways, and I thank you that, for that. And I'm thankful to have met you professionally and not on the wrong side of the law. I look forward to continuing that professional friendship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, this town is full of people who came here because they wanted a place to raise their families. And I know that that's what brought me here, is I wanted a safe place to bring my two young children and have them grow up never feeling threatened or unsafe. And the fact that we chose here out of anywhere in the country is a testament to all the work that you've done and your department has done before we even set foot in Holly Springs. And I thank you for helping create the home that my kids will know as they grow up.
Thank you.
And before you speak, I wanted to just a couple more points, piggyback. I think the highest compliment I can ever give anybody is that I was proud to work with them. I think you have a marvelous family, you lucky fellow, and a wonderful mother, right? And you've done good, all right? But what I think most of all is, very few people that work together like we've done. We've done some stuff on the phone, back and forth. I've always been amazed at your patience, well, most of the time. But what I'd like to leave you with is, there's a saying about what we call best friends. And I think along with just being coworkers, shall we say, I see us as best friends. I'll leave you with that, and wish you would say a few words or more.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you so much. And I guess, I guess I'll start by saying, wow, I mean, I didn't, I didn't anticipate this. I don't have any prepared remarks, and I know that you probably found that surprising that I'm at a loss for words, but I really am. But I think that, I mean, first of all, I would just say thank you. And I mean, the awards, and you know, I'm just honored, and I am humbled. And these folks in the back, they know, they know this emotion. And I think it's because I love what I do. And what stands out in my career to me is that, you know, it's not, I mean, I hear, I hear these things that I, I mean, it's almost like, you know, I'm talking about me. It's just, it's just so humbling. But what comes to mind is that, you know, the awards, while my hands are on these awards and they're being presented to me, there's so many other hands that should be there. Because, you know, if there's one thing I've learned over my 26-plus years in law enforcement is that you don't do anything by yourself. You don't do anything alone. It takes a team, and it takes these heroes in the back of the room. And I feel so privileged to have been a part of them, to be a part of my career, for me to have some part in their career. These are not only my coworkers, but they're my dear friends. And I truly care about each and every person in the police department. It's, and, and, and the councils that I have worked with, current, past. You know, one thing I'll say, and I've always said this, we have always had so much support for what we do. It's always been recognized the importance of what we do in law enforcement. And I've learned something from each of you. And in that, that I can take away, you know, our senior leadership team. It's, you know, I've always tried to learn and take away something from each person. And I hope that somewhere along the line, I left a little nugget for the people that I've worked with. And there's so many people that I could, could name and think. It's, I mean, again, it's emotional, you know, I think about Carl Dean. You know, Carl was, you know, he was the person that said, and who had confidence in me. And he always joked, however, he said, you know, saying, "Carl, I'm going to let you down." He said, "You're never going to let me down, I set the bar way down here, I know you're going to, you're going to..." And that was just Carl, but I do so appreciate Carl and Chuck, and the competence, and the council at the time, the competence in me, and the selection to lead the police department. And I so appreciate our relationship, Randy. Just like the men and women in the police department right now, there's, there's, there's always a fear of the unknown. And, you know, what's going to come next, and what kind of leader are we going to have? We, I mean, whether they like me or not, they know what they got. So, you know, there was a little bit of fear for me, too, when Chuck decided to retire, and we were going to get a new manager. But I was, I was, you were exactly what I remember sitting around the table and talking about what we wanted in a manager. And you have, for me, definitely fulfilled that. I mean, I wish I could have worked with you many more years, because I learn from you every day. And I so appreciate your leadership. So, you know, I don't want to get too long-winded, but I do want to thank my family. You know, because they're, they've had to endure this profession to, and it's a tough one, and it's tough on family, and I think these folks will tell you that family's very important. And I've always said, put your family first, this profession has, has to come second. I know how important we think it is, but family comes first, because if your home life is not right, you can't do anybody any good. And I have one of the most supportive people right here. And I, other than my mom, I mean, I can say that I definitely wouldn't be standing here right now if it wasn't for her, obviously. But, but I do, Mom, so appreciate that you, I mean, you instilled these values that they talk about. And, you know, you're, you were, you were a part of making me who I am, and I'm, and I'm proud of that. And I'm so thankful for that. But when I say that, I would not be standing here tonight if it wasn't for this person. She was the force behind me getting into this profession. She told me, I remember her telling me that, and she said, "That, I think that's your calling. I think that's what you will be good at." And she said, she actually said, "You'd be perfect for the profession." And I don't know that I lived up to that, but, you know, I think, I think you were right. This was my calling, and I have, it's been so rewarding, and I've so enjoyed it. But the, the story is that she actually, I had no idea where Holly Springs was, you know, 20, 26 years ago, never heard of it. And she, she, you know, I decided I wanted to go into law enforcement. She found, or she, she met someone at a school, and a lot of people don't know, she was in law enforcement at one time. And she met someone at school, happened to be Cecil Parker, the first chief in Holly Springs. And she said, "We're starting a police department." And at that time, it was really tough to get on anywhere. And she pushed me, she pushed me to write him a letter of interest. And she pushed me to apply here. She pushed me to, to, to request a ride-along, and then ultimately, yeah. And then send him a thank you letter. And she's a true Southern belle, had sent a thank you letter. But she really was the driving force behind me deciding to go into this profession, and specifically in Holly Springs. And, you know, I never looked back. I never, ever thought in over 26 years about going anywhere else, because I love this town so much. It's just, this is home for us now. We've lived here longer than we have anywhere else. And I'll say this in closing, we're not going anywhere. This is always going to be our home, our kids are nearby. We do have, have a little retreat down at the beach, I love to fish, so we'll spend some time there, but I'm not going anywhere, so you haven't seen the last of me. But I do just want to say thank you so much. I didn't expect this, I know I got a little long-winded. I probably would have had something prepared if I'd have known, but it was a very nice surprise, and I so appreciate it, it means so much to me. And I just want to thank everybody in this room right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
More later. Take care of that ankle.
Thank you, Chief.
Good night, thank you.
Good luck, Kaylee.
Thanks, Kay.
Mr. Mayor, can we, if we're going to, we're going to keep going, can we take a quick recess? Just a quick bio break?
I think that'd be a good idea. How about?
Five minutes or so?
Five, six, seven minutes.
All right.
Great, I see, thank you.
Seven-minute break. Thank you, troops.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Thank you.
What are we doing out there? Wolf of Wall Street, Gladiator, Braveheart. It's not an accident, not an accident. Yeah, I have big time. We did not. That's a good point. Linda, do you want our ballots? We need to sign them, right?
Sometimes I'm accidentally known for saying something before somebody else.
All right, we'll be silent. Never slow down. But last month, we broke even with our 2000 number, which we were growing at about a 50% clip. So it was typically mostly 50% off. Now we're up again. I have another doctor starting on June 1st, so we're expanding. Yeah. So the cumulative stress is definitely beating me out in every which way. It's true. I made, I did that once. And I'm like, never again. So I make it a point. I lock my calendar at work at 5 o'clock to make sure I have enough time to eat.
Well, Pete, did you fall asleep?
I just asked Linda where to eat.
I thought I'd order breakfast.
Fresh toast and sausage or something.
I figured it now.
I'm gonna need it. Like in a couple hours. I'll probably go home and have to feed the kids.
Some morning drink.
They're sleeping now. But like, my brother was here for four days over the weekend. And Dylan, he's like the boy twin, slept every night. But up and leading up to that, he was up like every two hours. And then my brother was here four nights. Didn't wake up one, up through the night, every single night. Last night, he's gone. He left yesterday at 3:00. 12:30, 2:30, 4:30. We just throw them in the pack and play on the first floor, right down our second.
Did you get it almost? We're all here. We're missing Randy.
Gotta get through that.
Let's call the meeting back to order anyway.
I like it.
Call the meeting back to order. I think we're back.
Need the town manager.
Let's just wing it. We're just gonna wing it, John. Daniel's here. We can go.
All right, you ready? Gen item seven, public hearing. Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment Land Use and Character Plan Amendments 19 UDO 05. It would be Sean Ryan, Planning and Zoning. Again, hi, Sean.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean Ryan, Department of Planning and Zoning. The purpose of this agenda item in public hearing is to consider modifications to the Unified Development Ordinance. We will request that you open a public hearing, and then there will be a ordinance available for adoption. So the purpose of these amendments is to follow up on the Land Use and Character Plan, which was adopted in 2019. Several of the concepts and policy recommendations are currently not found in the UDO, and amendments are needed in order to implement some of the basic concepts and policies that were identified in this plan. It's important to remember that this is not intended to be a full-scale rewrite of the UDO, or introduce new topics that would cause significant changes to be made. Staff has reviewed these policy concepts with the town council back at the January workshop. Also included in your packet was a spreadsheet that broke down the list of various amendments that staff is proposing, as well as the Supporting Land Use and Character Plan section to support those amendments. So the amendments are broken down into four basic categories: Housing in Neighborhoods, Natural Resources and Open Space, Auto-Oriented Uses, and Mixed-Use Activity Centers. In the Housing in Neighborhood section, staff is proposing modifications to accessory dwelling units, two-family homes, as well as providing additional buffering between residential developments. One of the more significant changes is a amendment to implement the Conservation Neighborhood option. By adding this option to our current Development Option section, we propose 30% open space, as well as smaller lot requirements, but no changes to the maximum density based on the zoning district. The next pretty big amendment in the Housing in Neighborhood section is in regards to infill development. We are proposing to expand the current infill development option that is only permitted in the downtown village district to other areas of town outside of the village district that are designated mixed residential neighborhood. These areas would need to meet certain qualifications for maximum size, as well as having existing development around the proposed project area. As you can see on the image here, this is an example of a cottage infill next to existing development. We've also proposed modifications to the findings of fact, in order to ensure that council can adequately weigh whether or not these projects are appropriate for the areas that they are proposed. Under the topic of Natural Resources and Open Space, staff is proposing modifications to require 2.5% open space in all residential neighborhoods, which is an increase from our current requirement of no open space. We are also proposing to allow for stormwater areas to count as open space if they are provided with amenities such as walking trails, fountains, or educational signage. There's one change proposed under the Auto-Oriented Uses, which would be to change, quick-change oil facilities from a permitted use-by-right to a special exception use in the local business zoning district. And then finally, there are several amendments proposed under the Mixed-Use Activity Centers, including implementation of minimum heights, minimum stories in regional centers, which are intended to be our most intense commercial and mixed-use centers, as well as some changes to the Mixed-Use Option. Significant changes in the Mixed-Use Option would be, would include combining the current Mixed-Use Option that is spread out over two different zoning districts into one district that has clear and consistent standards. Some major changes to this section would include providing a density incentive to include affordable housing within the project, increasing the amount of open space required, and also increasing the amount of non-residential from 20% minimum to 50% minimum, which helps us achieve our goals from more balanced tax base. Our Planning Board Representative, Mr. Madoni, is here tonight. You can see the vote was 9-0, and there was no discussion on the amendments. If these amendments are approved, what's next? We do intend to bring forward to you later tonight, a contract to begin work on full implementation of a new UDO, which would be anticipated for late 2021. I know that was a pretty brief summary. Hopefully, the information that staff provided in the packet provided significant detail for the council. However, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of Sean at this point?
I had a random questions going through the packet. So thank you. It was a lot of information. There was a two-room, introducing two rooms as the meeting for the infill as a standard. Does that make sense?
You're referring to the two-family dwelling?
Yeah, the two-room. Was that to keep it small? Is that why it was a two-room requirement? I think it was around the infill.
No, I was talking about the additional houses.
Additional houses, yeah. And the reason I was asking if you have two rooms. So in the, in the real estate world, the bedrooms is like with a closet. But people often will add studios, which actually makes like a third bedroom, but it's not really. So I was just wondering, is there also a size component? Because I was thinking that has to do with kind of keeping it stable.
Are you referring to the accessory dwelling units, which shall contain no more than two bedrooms?
Was it 1,000 feet? Okay.
Yes. Yep. So the two-bedroom requirement was existing in the ordinance. So was the 1,000-foot maximum. What we were proposing to modify in that section was to remove the requirement that accessory dwelling unit be part of another accessory structure, such as a garage. So our current requirements do not permit a standalone accessory dwelling unit. These changes would do that and not make any other changes to the size limits of those.
But keep it stable. Okay, thank you. And then I also, in terms of all the businesses, they have things listed like coin and stamp stores, et cetera. Okay. And I was just wondering, is there a modernized version that includes things like tattoo parlors, or adult bookstores, or other things that, you know, talk to the characteristics of our town?
Yes. So adult uses are regulated in a different section of our ordinance. They're not typically allowed in commercial zoning districts. Tattoo parlors are actually not identified as a permitted use in the ordinance in, in straight terms. However, one of the things, of course, that we will be looking at with the new UDO is a modernization of all of our land uses and what is an appropriate zoning district.
So that's, all right. They were random. I was just, when I was reading through. Thank you.
Questions?
And Rick, the planning board again was 9-0. Any particular comments that come to your mind? Since you were here this long, I thought you should at least be recognized. All right, Rick, well, thank you for sticking with us. At this point in time, we're going to open and close the public hearing because no one's here for that. And I'll go to further discussion. Any questions?
I got a few questions. One, real quick, how does that open space 2.5 compare to other surrounding towns?
So other municipalities regulate open space differently. For instance, Apex has a square footage requirement that they call a play lawn. They don't necessarily define that sort of open space. Our other adjacent municipalities, I believe, Hique, has a similar requirement to what we have now, which is just a general open space requirement. They don't define it as developed open space. So we wanted to be very careful in the amount of open space that we thought was appropriate, recognizing that we already ask developers to set aside a significant amount of land for roads and stormwater, tree preservation areas. So the open space requirement that we are proposing can overlap with tree preservation areas. It can overlap as an, we have in our incentives for historic preservation that if you preserve a historic structure, that counts as open space. So we, we are trying to get in a meaningful amount of open space in interim while we write in the UDO, but not step too far, keeping in mind some of our other goals that were identified in.
I did notice, as you're talking about the infill stuff, since you mentioned some time on that, that part of the verbiage in there, in that, in that contractor document talked about town officials providing incentives for infill. I just want to make sure we weren't trying to expand our incentive to other areas of infill outside of, you know, the current DDI. So that's. I just want to make sure there wasn't a correlation. I didn't see it in the actual verbiage, but the text that you use as a justification talked about using incentives. I just want to make sure we weren't further trying to incentivize anyone to do infills in other parts of the town.
No, we, we have strictly defined where infill outside of downtown would be allowed would be an area designated as mixed residential neighborhood. So that's a specific category that's on the land use plan. And then you have to meet additional qualifications. You can't be greater than 10 acres. You have to be surrounded at least 75% by other developments. So we're really trying to target that in. And then we change, we're proposing a change to the findings of fact. It's kind of that catch-all of, is, after all of these criteria, is this still an appropriate spot for infill? So we kind of have that backstop in the findings of fact.
One that I did notice when we talked about, you know, the downtown district, talked about townhouses at the edge of the town-village district. Is there a specific reason for adding that very specific language? And I know we just talked about this, you know, last week in our workshop about potential redefining the boundaries of, you know, the town-village district. So I just wondered if that was a little premature to talk about things on the boundaries of the town district right now?
So the Town-Village Zoning District, as it's currently written, permits townhomes as a permitted use. The Town-Village Zoning District is primarily intended to be that commercial or above-story residential zoning district, and not use our limited land that we have set aside for commercial for additional residential projects, especially since many of our town-village, town-village zone properties are located along Main Street. But that's, and that's where we've identified that we want commercial. So staff is recommending that that be removed as a permitted use in town-village. And then if somebody wanted to do residential, they would have to rezone to R8. We would encourage them to do the infill options where townhomes is an option in that use. So that, that was really our focus, was making sure that our commercial zoning districts for downtown concentrated on commercial and not letting more residential seep into areas that we wanted to preserve.
And the only thing I've already talked to Mr. Harrington about this, but I think for 3.09, and you actually called us out and mentioned it a little bit. But I think since we haven't really set a policy, and we kind of didn't come to any consensus at the retreat, nor in our latest workshop about affordable housing, I think it's a bit premature to put that in a signed-off UDO agreement right now for trying to give incentive or some type of varying, you know, density for affordable housing. So I for one would like to strike that line together, right? UDO revision for now until we actually get the defined policy of where we're going with the town.
You can vote on that.
Other comments? Do we need to vote on it?
We can, we can look at the motion and figure out how to word the motion.
Sure. Like we talked about.
I'm comfortable with it, Ian. I guess it's, we have to discuss that.
I just don't, I think, I think it's premature. I mean, for us to talk about doing a 25% increase in, in density based on affordable housing right now, I mean, we really haven't, A, defined what it is, and B, come out with a given policy for the county. We, we acknowledge that the, you know, last workshop, that we're gonna go move forward with a housing study at some point. So again, I, I think we didn't get to anywhere a consensus on affordable studies, affordable housing portion at the, at the workshop previous or after the retreat. So I think it's premature for us to put that in a written document right now.
I agree on that particular section. Section 3A1 under 3.09 for the Mixed-Use Option. I think, yeah, honestly, I was quite surprised. I read the summary sheet three times. I didn't see one reference to affordable housing on there, that this was even a change in that section. So as I was So I was a little surprised to read the fine print and see it without really being cued into that on the summary sheet. And, and I know we're in the brevity mode now, but not much discussion on it here. So I would echo Councilman McGrath's sentiments on that and ask that we strike that piece of the ordinance until we have a little further discussion or a policy developed around specifically that topic. Additionally, on section 309, which is the mixed-use option, could you, could you just help me, Sean, on the changes that are being introduced on the minimum percentage for a mixed-use option? I think I saw a reference to 20%, for residential, there was a reference to 20% of each single family dwelling, multifamily townhome and multi, multifamily dwellings, and then 50% requirement for commercial. Is it 20% for each of the residential pieces plus 50%? Or how does that math?
It's, it's 20% from the residential category and 50% from the commercial category. So it could be just one of those residential uses, or it could be a mix of all three. Now, we are proposing to limit the amount of single-family residential that can be a component of a mixed-use project.
I have 50, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, just because we, from inquiries from people who are potentially interested in using the mixed-use option in the past, we were getting a little worried that it was being used as a backdoor way to do a single-family subdivision and commercial building. So that, that was the reasoning that staff was proposing that change to limit that potential.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I mean, there's a lot of good changes in here, right? Outside of the one I spoke on, and transitional use section was good, open space section was great. I think taking a look at the mixed-use option needed to be done just because of some of the math questions we've had on the percentages. Implementing the conservation districts or finding a way to do that in this environment where we've got to wait 12 to 18 months for a new UDO, I think there's some good quick hits in here. But I'd echo that same concern for now. Thanks.
Certainly, just, just to make the council aware, from staff's perspective, in reviewing the land use plan, of course, affordable housing was a big component of, a portion of that land use plan. The density bonus for affordable units is a pretty common method that municipalities use, not only around the country, but in North Carolina, where we don't have the ability to mandate affordable units. And there has been a lot of discussion about, you know, would the town participate in fee waivers or other financial incentives for affordable units? And this is a method that does not require the town to financially invest in affordable housing, but provides an incentive for developer to provide it voluntarily in order to get that density bonus. And then we can perhaps connect them with some of our funding partners, like Wake County, to supply that financing that they need. We also felt it was a good idea to require that these units be spread out throughout the development so that they're not all one kind. And there is a section in there that would require the developer to come to an agreement with the town as to the, the mix of the affordable housing. So it still provides the town the ability to negotiate the specifics of that affordable housing. So staff, of course, wanted to put that forward because it was a component of the land use plan. We put together some parameters that we thought were very common across other municipalities and that were enforceable in Holly Springs, but certainly is written in such a way that it could be stripped from the ordinance and not damage the integrity of the rest of this section.
I think, you know, just on that, on that point, Sean, the, while it's not a direct financial investment or subsidy of the housing component per se, the, the language does call for an agreement with the town, which, you know, they, what you spoke of, right? Having the ability to negotiate it, which requires more staff time administration of items that, as you mentioned, are not currently within our purview, in a way, in North Carolina to regulate. So we're adding more red tape in a process that's already pretty, pretty strict with some things. So I just have a little heartburn over signing ourselves up as a town unit to get involved with those kinds of negotiations when development teams should be bringing ideas and coming up with things and letting us evaluate those merits without really, you know, engaging in how do we find that balance? I don't, I don't know that I'm quite there yet, but understand your, your explanation. Thanks.
So what do we think?
Well, I understand what, you know, what Tim Barry is saying. Right now, we have a situation where there was concern over the proposal that Village Gate brought to us and whether we were setting a precedent, how would we handle that if we move forward with that project and all of a sudden we had developers offering similar things with no set of guidelines as to what we're going to accept and everything becomes arbitrary and subjective. And as we know, that, that discussion and the staff time when a developer brought it to us was already extensive. I think this is at least a good way to put in some temporary guidelines for developers who may want to approach us with a similar framework as to what those gave us offering so that there's less vagueness. And at least we have, and it's not permanent, obviously, this can all be discussed in further workshops as we move through the UDO amendments, but this is a big stopgap in the meantime so that there's at least some framework for these discussions moving forward. But I think ignoring it and saying, let the developer come with us, does not mean that staff time is going to be less.
Yeah, I just, I just think, Aaron, I think from, from a policy perspective and what we're looking at and what we heard tonight in, in the discussion, and one of the key things we hear in every one of these projects is, is traffic, right? And so what is density, what does density lead to? It leads to traffic. So we're not addressing, you know, the secondary outcomes of what we're putting in the policies. That's why I'm concerned. We really haven't discussed this without just throwing it in there and going, is this, is this really the right approach that we want to take? I mean, I, I'm happy to discuss what we did with, with Village, with Village Gate and, you know, look at some of those creative ideas that developers bring forward. That's fine. You know, what only was bringing forward was not an increase in density, which that would certainly have, I think, raised a lot of red flags for us in that area of town because of the traffic concerns. We've already got a density problem in apartments and other structures in that area. So, you know, while it was an interesting, you know, proposal, I, I don't think that, you know, that framework is a framework that really is where we're after right now from a density perspective. So that's why when I read it, I went, yeah, this is, for me, for one, we haven't gotten to a point where we all kind of feel comfortable about a policy we're moving forward, and we certainly have not gotten to a point of the specific mechanism to do that. And that's the density part that, you know, inherently bothers me because that density concern only comes up in every project we talk about.
Man, I completely understand where you and Dan are both coming from on this. I disagree philosophically with the notion that density necessarily is a linear relationship with traffic. It depends on a lot of other factors with how our UDO is written, how developments are proposed, but I understand where you're coming from. I, you know, with Village Gate, we, we didn't have that framework. We never had a discussion about density or what each of us, where our line in the sand was about what we're willing to accept within, without the units and whether it influences our decision or not. So at least having this framework gives us something to work off of and a common ground to have these discussions from.
I think Village Gate, we can talk about it, but it, I, I know I've been pretty clear in my commentary around what we're incentivizing, and it's public infrastructure, right? It's not workforce housing units. If the developer wants to do that on his own, which he's very passionate about, considering some of the other uses that he has and employees that he has in some of his different businesses, that's his prerogative. So I don't think it's something that we've, you know, spent time necessarily on that particular element, and that's probably why we're at this point right now, is that we don't have a framework for that. This is a framework, you know, right now, I understand your point about having something to at least have something. I just, it's not one that I'm, I'm ready to support, knowing that density is the bonus. And, you know, I think there's, there's more discussion to be had there. And if it's step one, right? I mean, let's go through the UDO process and understand what else is broken in there and how, how is, what's a holistic fix? And if we're going to end up doing a housing study, what are the answers? What are we trying to solve for? So we're creating a framework, but we still don't know what we're solving for, we've yet to answer that question. So it's, I'm a little conflicted about that.
So what do you think our action on number seven should be?
Well, I think I agree with the Councilman McGrath and Councilman Barry. At, at this point, just discussion that we've just had seems to indicate that it goes a little bit beyond the scope of this document right now. You know, when I read the explanation of quick fixes and basic policy concepts, it more, it's a little bit more discussion and discovery.
My concern is, and I, and there's a really valid points about the framework. My concern is that I don't know if we, we are going to move forward with a housing study in the next week. And the, the way that the world is right now with affordable housing, that is also, I believe, as well, as well, the infrastructure is important to be used. So it's not just a infrastructure and then other things that have that pretty high level of risk. Having something that seems pretty standard with other communities makes sense as a starting point. Unless I heard that you were going to start and be, you know, talking about housing options instead sooner than later, then, then that way, that, I'd be a place breaking now, as long as I know there's something to move to. And I don't know when you're doing that.
I know that's a discussion to have at our budget workshop next week, but with the recent budget visions due to the, due to the endemic, you know, that is, that is up in the air, so.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that we need to have a whole study to, you know, to, to land ourselves as, 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 to land ourselves on a way better framework of what we're trying to get after rather than just, you know, throwing a blanket. You know, 25% increase in density. I, I just, I'd be much more comfortable if we just take that out for now. This is, this is a small UDO rewrite. I mean, there's a significant amount of UDO rewrite, but I just don't see it. It fits the, it fits the time or place right now to be putting that in there. I think we had a more discussion about this. But I'll just throw it in there. We certainly don't need to throw out the rest of the good work that staff did on this UDO rewrite, but I think that, that small section.
So my question to you would be this, do we table the whole issue or do we make a motion to accept it first and have a rider on the motion that says, accept this particular section? Or what?
I think I've heard a consensus to move, to have enough to move forward with a motion to, to pass the balance, but then strike section 3.09, 3.a.1, which would be the timeless thing. And that way, the other stuff goes through.
So it would be 3.09b3a1 in its entirety.
Can I ask for a commitment of when we can talk about it? Is that something you can try?
I, I think there'd be a couple of options. One, it could be a separate standalone discussion, say at a workshop or a future council meeting on that specific item. It could be something that's included in a future housing study as a consideration and some advice back. It also could be considered, even though you're, you may not include it as a temporary change right now, it's possible that it would come back in similar or some different type of form in the fuller set of recommendations and considerations that would come back as part of your comprehensive package there. So that would be, you know, we've got about an 18-month process on, on that one. So I don't know the exact timing or when that would come back, but it probably in the next nine to 12 months, when we have some preliminary, additional preliminary components that we'd want to bring back your feedback.
And to that point, Randy, I think, you know, one of the, one of the do-outs out of, out of the retreat was to get more information from Wake County, the Wake County housing information for the Wake County folks that were there with us at the retreat. They said they had amplified data for Holly Springs, so we still haven't got that yet. So, I mean, I think there's opportunity for discussion and information and data to be added on the, you know, in, in the not street district. We just don't have the information yet. Probably because, but that's what we lost a couple of.
I'll make a motion, Dan.
Yeah.
To the point?
I, I.
Got it.
Or whoever. I had it.
I'll make a motion to adopt UDO text amendment ordinance 2001 to adopt a statement of compatibility and to adopt 19UDO05 Unified Development Ordinance text amendments to implement the land use character plan as submitted by the town of Holly Springs, with the exception of section 3.09b3aalpha1.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Oh, nay. One nay.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Are we at the consent agenda already?
Already?
Only 11. That was a joke.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Motion passes already. Next item.
Mr. Mayor. Your, your pleasure, but we do have one more item under recognitions, and that is National Public Works Week. I got it. Should I go with that one? Whatever your pleasure is. I got it right in front of me.
The agenda item number nine, recognition, National Public Works Week, and Scott Chase, Assistant Town Manager is here to discuss this briefly, and I will add a few brief little comments. So if you would mind coming forward. You didn't know that? Now you know why you're here.
Absolutely.
Now, I think this is an appropriate time, so, especially with all the work that the Public Works has done during the COVID crisis. So, you know, with the yard waste pickup and various other things, I think it's a very appropriate time for this proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to that, the, you know, one of the things that I think that a lot of residents don't realize is all the behind-the-scenes work that our Public Works staff does, that in many ways go unnoticed. And these are, as you've heard me say before, these are employees who are working in the rain and the sunshine and the heat and the cold. You know, they're picking up the yard waste, they're fixing potholes, they're making sure that the water, when we wake up in the morning and take that first shower, that the water comes and that it goes away in another safe way. So all things that we oftentimes take for granted, and these are the folks who are making sure that we operate a life that's uninterrupted, so to speak, in our, in our daily activities.
And the North Main Street project on top of that.
That was an incredible project during the COVID.
It's looking good, too.
Yeah.
Well, anyway.
When I see them and they're always so friendly and smiling and waving, I mean, they are very much a face to our town staff that is welcome.
Yeah, yeah, really appreciative of their work.
I think I've told this story for 18 years. I'm going to tell it again. I have always been impressed with WRAL with their strong coverage, especially on ice or snow. And I still remember on more than one occasion, in their little, whatever they call that truck that they go through, they're all towns. "We are in Apex and the, the roads are terrible." "Oh, wait a minute, they're clear. You must be in Holly Springs." "Oh, nope, we're back in Fuquay, you're bad again." Now, I got a call from Fuquay, shouldn't say this, the Fuquay mayor saying, "How did you get DOT to do all that?" I explained to him that we did it. So that's my story. I'm going to stick with that forever because these guys do a great job, and I sincerely think they're the best Public Works Department in the, I'd say easily in the state, maybe in the whole country. And I compliment Muncie and his whole crew.
That's going to be a sad day, just like with Chief's retirement. I can only imagine when Luncy gets here, that's going to be some hard words that day. So we're really proud of that group. Thank you.
Okay. That's it. So we have a proclamation on that? I think we do. We, and Linda, do we have one?
Yes, we do.
At that proclamation, we'll give it to Luncy maybe later? Let's do that, okay? Thank you. Next is the consent agenda, which is already done. Agenda 14, new business, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee appointments. Ms. McKinney here on.
We received 16 applications for Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I have Hallie Devade and Val Atkinson received five, and Christopher Cook received three. So they have both then appointed Christine Wallert, Stephen Brower, and Sidney Lloyd, each received two votes. So we need to do a runoff between those three. I don't know if you want to do that by voice vote?
Sure. Would you, would you repeat the three again? How would we do that?
Christine Wallert, Stephen Brower, and Sidney Lloyd.
So you need two out of three?
We need one.
One out of three.
Three.
Okay. Let's bounce right into, starting with Aaron, if you don't mind. One other thing?
I'll vote for Christine Wallert.
Okay.
Stephen Brower.
Okay. Yeah.
Stephen Brower.
Christine?
Christine Wallert.
Okay.
Stephen Brower.
Got it, Linda?
Yep, Stephen Brower.
Yes, ma'am.
The third member. The invitation would be to appoint Val Atkinson, Christopher Cook, and Stephen Brower.
Want to tackle that one?
Motion to appoint the following people to the Holly Springs Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the three-year terms from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Val Atkinson, Christopher Cook, and Stephen Brower.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, motion passing that thing. Again, thank you, Linda, for that. We go to item 16, or item 16, new business, the pre-advisory committee appointments. Again, Mr. McKinney.
We received four applications for regular members and one application for the junior position. Amanda Bowden received five votes. Jennifer Bell receives two votes. Jill Carr receives three votes. Christina Ostag received five votes. And then the junior, there was only one applicant for the junior member and she receives five votes. Julia, Julia Donosco. So you have two.
Two fives.
Who received five votes. I would assume that you want them to be the three year term.
Right.
And then the next most votes would be Jill Carr, who receives three. So I'm assuming you would like her to have the one year term. And then Julia Donosco for the junior.
Motion. Motion to appoint the following people to the Holly Springs Tree Advisory Committee for three year terms from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Amanda Bowden and Christina Matt Ostag. And for the remainder of a vacated term ending June 30th, 2021, Jill Kerr. And to appoint Julia Donosco, a junior member to a one year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Oh, motion passing that thing. Thank you and thank you again, Linda. Item 16, new business, U D O ordinance rewrite consultant contract. And this would be Melissa Sigma on planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for coming.
And say, watching remotely, it's very convenient. So this next item tonight is to consider. Maybe that, that combined. So what we're, what we're requesting actually is to look at a warding of contract to stand tech for the unified development ordinance rewrite project. Coming in with a total budget of approximately of 197,100. For your reference, 75,000 of that was, has already been allocated in the current vote budget year with the remainder proposed for the coming fiscal year. So some key points for this, just to kind of get us back, as Sean was speaking earlier about the U D O amendments. We are looking to implement the new land use and character plan. So this is really that holistic process that will take everything into account over approximately an 18 month time period. It does require a lot more detail than going from our vision. So we, we have that big picture vision that we developed with the community. And at this point now, we're going into the fine grain details. So we take two pages from the land use plan. And you might end up with eight, 10 pages of regulations that detail all of the individual requirements that get us to what we're looking, which may be that very attractive, a place that meets our community's desired goals and the things that they value. So the project proposal is at about an 18 month timeline. We're looking to kick off next month. And with that, we will start the, the consultant team would start with some background research, looking at our plans and ordinances that already exist. Getting into creating a detailed public engagement plan that would take into effect or into account our current situations. Looking to make the most of the community engagement and come up with some innovative ways for us to ensure that everyone is participating. One element of that will be a U D O steering committee. The steering committee would be, again, just one element of public participation. It would include both members of a council member, appointed board and committee members, members that are technical experts in different fields. And those would be folks who would continue throughout the process. We will also have stakeholder interviews with all mayor and council, as well as various members of the community and other, again, kind of technical expertise. What we're really be doing with this process as opposed to the U D O or the, the land use plan is drilling down into those technical details. So this is the nitty gritty where we get to geek out with zoning regulations. So that being said, we'll be, you'll certainly be hearing much more about this project in the near future where we get into some of those details in terms of process. And kind of start, start the, the work we've been looking forward to for the past number of months. And so with that, we would, oh, sorry.
Questions?
Happy to take any questions.
Been there, done that? Okay. Suggested motion.
Award a contract to stand tech for the United Unified Development Ordinance U D O rewrite project.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Oh, motion passing that thing. Thank you. Good job. Item 17, unfinished business? No. Consideration of nonprofit grants to support COVID-19 relief efforts. You want to keep that one off, Randy?
Sure, happy to, Mr. Mayor. So Mayor and Council, as you recall, at your April 21st council meeting, you did appropriate 15,000 to the change foundation in terms of helping to support the COVID-19 small business support in recovery. Yet also at your May 5th council meeting, you awarded 10,000 to the Western Wake Crisis Ministry to help them begin with their efforts, humanitarian type efforts to help with individuals who were impacted by housing and food and rent payments. The, at that time, council also was considering a couple of other organizations. And at your last meeting, you directed staff to, to coalesce or to, to receive some more specific information from a couple of agencies that were, that were requesting funds. And so we've got those in your packet and the two additional requests. One is from the Holly Springs Food Cupboard and another one from the Western Regional Food Security Action Group. Both of these are focused on helping to support the food needs in our community.
Discussion, comments, questions? Been down this road?
Quick one, Randy. What did we, what did we ever come up with? I, I saw that what, what we put out as a town about, you know, the Western Wake Crisis Ministry and, you know, unfortunately that didn't quite hit the mark as to where we were talking about making truly targeted, you know, in the public interest of Holly Springs. It actually kind of said, yeah, this is going to provide relief effort to multiple municipalities in, in this area, not just for Holly Springs. So I'll, I'll go back to, you know, my concern when we talked about this previously is, you know, we're doing this in the public interest of, you know, taxpayer dollars that are paying into taxpayer funds for the town they live in. Yet we're potentially providing funding and, and, and I think both of these are, you know, very deserving. Obviously the food cupboard, you know, directly here in Holly Springs, perfect match. But again, Western Regional, as I read through their letter, it kind of strikes me the, you know, a similar way that the Western Lake Crisis Ministry did, which is providing for a broader regional perspective. And we all know that Wake County just provided, you know, eight, eight plus million dollars for COVID response. I don't know where all that money went to. Since they apparently are laying off folks now and they're trying to rebalance their books. And we still have money flowing in from the state, from what the state senate passed and from the federal government. So again, I, from an overall perspective, that's, that still remains my concern is how we enter an agreement that we actually have some verification that this is, these funds are being used in the public interest of Holly Springs residents. Which is, which is where I believe we need to focus our effort because these are coming out of taxpayer dollars going back to, you know, people in need in our, in our direct community.
And, and I would say to respond that if I could, the takeaway that I had from your last meeting, I, I interpreted as an expectation from council that, that any of these funds be directed for individuals in Holly Springs. And so as part of our grant reporting requirements and expectations back to the agency that we would want to know, you know, how many families or, you know, those types of metrics that would help you know what type of impact that your allocations had.
I can speak directly to.
Yeah.
That since we had this letter, 6,000 meals, I mean, they're feeding 210 to 230 in our town every night. And, and what this is helping, the money is not quite there and they have some shortages. It's, it's to our town. And when I've talked to them, they had said, no, they've made sure that this is helping our town. So I'm confident that if you wanted to include that in the distribution.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I want to be able to, you know, go back to, you know, our constituents to go, yeah, we put this money out in public interest and it's actually helping.
Back where, yeah.
No, that's great. I mean, but that's like I said, with the Western Lake Ministry one, that one kind of blurred a little, the lines a little bit as that messaging went out. So, you know, it's where those funds were actually going. So that's.
Yeah. And I think the messaging might've been confusing, but it was my understanding from council that we had to enter into an agreement that these funds be used for the public of Holly Springs for it to be legal. Is that correct?
Is that in fact what happened? I guess.
Not, not to my knowledge, no. So they, it'd be subsequent to that agreement. That was the intent, right?
Okay.
In terms, in terms of food programs between these two, I think the, the majority of our cuts are coming from the food supply. The lines are getting longer.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
The food programs are a little more, no pun intended, a little more palatable to me than, you know, some of, some of the other ones. I think there is a need here. We've supported the food cupboard for a long time. They do good work. It, it's a, it's a need that's, that, you know, I'm pretty passionate about and have a lot of feeling towards. So I, I'm okay with that, with these programs. More so than, than Western Wake, mainly because their website says that you have to have an apex mailing address to use their food cupboard, which was a little interesting. But anyway, the, the topic at hand, the only concern I have on the, the Western Humans and Human Services Center one is really elaborating on Sean's point a little bit, but how are they funded? Are they a county agency? Are they associated with the county? Are they a 501(c)(3)? Where do they get their money from? What kind of money do they have with the food cupboard? And with Western Wake, they applied to our grant programs. They went through that process. We saw their audits. We saw their balance sheets. We saw their assets. We knew what we were getting into. With this one, little, little unknown, you know, since it hasn't gone through that process as an applicant or at least had that vetting. So I'm just curious if, I don't know if you have those answers or not, but I, I don't know how they're funded. And with the, if they are supplemented from the county, I would just question, you know, is this the right time for us now to, to get involved with that grant? Or is, are they not getting enough money from the county? Where is that other money? You know, going. So I'm just a little confused on how they're funded at this point.
I don't know that answer. Does anybody know that answer?
They, they, they have some funding, but they're, they're making donations. And they're tied to the churches that are.
I suppose donations. Yeah.
Do we have that document? And why is it on county letterhead, I guess, then? If it's a 501(c)(3).
This is the organization that's working to make sure that the right communities are being served. But it's the church, church, church program there that's food and food program. So it's, it's working, it's making sure it's working to do the best they can for the towns around. So they're looking to coordinate across the county. But this program specifically, they reached out to Holly Springs, you know, how many were feeding every night. It's helping Holly Springs people and we're lucky that they're, they're doing it perfectly. Nobody's turned to one.
Is there a way, Christine, then to, to make a direct contribution to the entities that are providing things to Holly Springs? So we don't get into what Dan talks about. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, that's, that's my whole point of this. I mean,
if we.
Wake County, Wake County put out $81 million in relief for the.
Can't we say the same thing again? If these funds, if we agree, have to be used in Holly Springs? Isn't that the whole issue?
And I think there's a specific fund for the church. I'm looking on a, a website. They're just starting to launch the website to get more donations.
Yeah, I, I know the churches. I know churches.
I just, I just want to understand how the money flows. Like is that a county thing? They, they hold the purse strings and they flow the money to these organizations that actually do the business of getting the food distributed to people that need it? Like, is that how the money goes? Or is, that's the part I'm confused about. I would like to understand a little bit more just how that money flows or who's, does it go? Did we write a check? Who do we write the check to? Does it go to these churches? And then they facilitate that? And all these different municipalities, I guess I'm just missing how that's organized.
The Church of Pilgrim, will say that we want it for its Holly Springs food, which is what they're supporting now.
So Mayor Pro Tim and Members of Council, I, I can, I can try to answer part of that. And then I'm going to ask, phone a friend here, Linda McKinney, our town clerk, who actually spoke with the representatives. Cause this was a question we had as well. The question, well, who, who receives the check and who is it that that is coordinating? And I guess maybe I would summarize it as my understanding is that Wake County in this role serves as somewhat of an umbrella coordinating group and that there's a, it's a coalition of a variety of entities. And those entities are nonprofits. And I think in this particular case, there's one church that is maybe the primary conduit that they're using in this area of the county. But Ms. McKinney, did I articulate that in the way that you understood it as well?
Yes, Pleasant Grove Church and the pastor there, whose first name is Stephanie, and I can't find her last name in that email, is the person who would make the agreement. She would be the one with the authority to make an agreement with the town. And the funds would be made out to the W R, Western Regional Food Security Account at Pleasant Grove Church.
That's the church up on, we talked about that, yeah. That's a little, I think it's a little white church up on, uh, one towards the lake. I think I've seen that before.
I was towards Jordan Lake, you have to run.
I think Harris Lake.
Pretty sure I'm right on that. Anyway, point would be, be used for Holly Springs only, whatever. The agreement. So what's your pleasure?
So we're still working out the agreement. So obviously the need wasn't back right that we, they need to get, they need to get it to Western Wake like right away.
Refresh my memory on the two requests originally, food cupboard was, how much was it again?
On the day and specified.
Didn't specify. Couldn't find it. How much?
They did not specify. So I, I think two weeks ago, we had 16,000 identified. We used 10 for Western Wake Crisis Ministry. We had six in that bucket.
We originally, or we originally proposed, or I originally proposed an additional $2,500 grant to the food cupboard, the natural we did through the grants committee. And then Christine had recommended the same amount to the second group.
That would just about kill the 16, yeah.
It would. We have a thousand left, but the manager has also identified an initial $10,000 if additional groups come forward that any of the council members would like to consider in the future. It hasn't been reallocated by the council yet. But it had been identified initially.
So the answer to the question is two of us, 2,500 each, you think?
I'm comfortable with that.
That ring about?
The food cupboard gave us clear numbers, you know, what their additional expenses are. I appreciated that in their letter. Christine or, I mean, does anybody have an idea of how much some of the food is costing that's being distributed to the folks? I mean, 230 meals.
I just see what we're delivering and the need and how hungry people are. So I'm, I did not get into the. I don't, no, I don't know all of it. Because I'm more worried about people having food.
I'm familiar with this too, Sean. But, but I, I also can answer your question. I will say one thing. I've seen it work. I've seen people, I've seen cars backed up, just like what you see on TV with blah, blah, blah. And I, I think for 2,500 bucks personally, that's a good investment as long as it's used in Holly Springs. Of course, I know the church too, for obviously. It's up to you guys.
Yeah, I'm fine with 2,500 for each.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to authorize the town manager to enter into the following COVID-19 relief contracts as determined by council for the following amounts. $2,500 for the Holly Springs food cupboard and $2,500 for the Western, excuse me, Human Services Center.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Oh, motion passing that thing. Thank you. Going to other business, I like to take this a second to catch everybody up who might be still watching. I like to cover the COVID-19 status as of Monday, yesterday, 18th. State cases confirmed 19,203 and of this, 853 are new since testing has increases dramatically. So when you read that increase, remember one thing, it's still at 7%. It has not changed. That's level. Very important point. Hospitalizations, 511, that's down from 534 a week ago. Deaths, 661 up from 452 a week ago. But sadly, approximately, and again, we said this last time, 70% of those deaths are from nursing homes and convalescent homes. That's so sad. And I think people are starting to get the idea that that's, you talked about these pressure points, hotspots, call it what you will. It's about time they figured this out. Holly Springs, at last count, was 19 cases confirmed and no reported deaths. Facts, not fear. Thank you very much. Next. Who else?
I just want to reiterate that I would like for us to talk about affordable housing sooner than later. And hearing, reading to each month, it seems like a long time. So that was why I supported what we did tonight to pull that out of the media and the books that we just talked about.
Okay. Anybody else?
So this is our first meeting together in a while, and I was waiting to have this discussion until we could meet in person because I didn't feel real comfortable having it virtually over Zoom. But if we can all think back to the pre-COVID world we were all living in a couple of months ago, we were having this kind of bubbling conversation about the safety of not only our town meetings, but of our town facilities. And that conversation has taken a backseat because there's been a more immediate crisis that we've all been paying attention to, and rightfully so. But since then, I've heard concern from a number of residents about the safety of our facilities, specifically around the lack of any restrictions on weapons, especially as it relates to areas frequented by our kids, including our athletic fields and our other parks and rec facilities. What's concerning to me is that currently we have no restrictions on the carrying of weapons in any of our town facilities and amenities. And so there is nothing to stop someone from carrying a weapon here in Town Hall, where our employees interact with the public every day, or Ting Park, or athletic fields, where hundreds of our families gather throughout the week, or at least normally do when we have our rec sports open. So with that in mind, and in hopes of, you know, maintaining a safe and accident-free recreational facilities and amenities for our residents, but especially our children, in the hopes of creating a safe and comfortable work environment for our town employees and the residents utilizing our town services, I would like to consider a motion tonight to direct our town manager and our town attorney to draft an ordinance for consideration at our next meeting on June 2nd that would prohibit the carry of deadly weapons at Holly Springs Town Hall, the Holly Springs Cultural Center, the Hunt Recreation Center, Ting Park, and our athletic fields at Parish Womble Park.
Comments? I know we've talked about this.
It came up, Pete, in one of our parks and rec readings about the concerns about the sports field. And it seemed like it was the whole consensus was that they were all concerned about not having any legislation. I'd like, I'd support that.
Anybody else?
This is a great topic to talk about 11:35 at night, I must say. I mean, we we I would like to see what the state laws actually are. I mean, this is getting into stuff that we don't even have the authority to regulate. So I I absolutely do not support anything like that at this time, right now, and would like to understand how the US Constitution would look upon a restriction like that and statutorily what we're even allowed to do when it comes to something like that.
This, it is something we're statutorily are allowed to regulate with some limitations. There are some general statutes from the General Assembly limiting where we can regulate this, but in our town and facilities, it's something within our power and something other municipalities, you know, and our neighbors have done. That's why I would like to have our town attorney involved in the drafting of this ordinance, because there will be some restrictions on how far we can stretch that authority that we have, but it is something within our authority to do.
Ryan?
It's correct. It's your real estate. You do not have the authority to regulate, to prohibit firearms on public spaces like sidewalks, greenways, streets, that type of thing. But your real estate that you own, your building, and your well-defined athletic fields that are areas that are programmed for athletic purposes, you are you are able to regulate both open carry and concealed carry. So you can prohibit the carrying of firearms, or one or both, or either or not, right now.
I think to to follow on with the mayor's mantra, facts not fear, I'd I'd prefer we have a more robust discussion about this before we just send off our staff and town manager to to draft something about that. And and I think the councilor mentioned some some very reasonable points there that, you know, while you might feel restricted in a very small confined space, or, you know, this building or that building, that doesn't do anything for somebody who's standing right outside the door of that building in a in a different public place. So again, I I'm a I'm a data person. I spent my entire life, you know, getting intelligence briefs and things like that, trying to do, trying to analyze and assess the threat. I haven't seen any of that analysis. I haven't heard any of it. There might be some people, just like there are folks that are fearful for different reasons about what's going on right now. And there's different restrictions in certain places. Some don't make sense to some people, so some people are doing them. Other people aren't. When you look at how we're reacting to a lot of things right now, I'd I'd prefer to have a bit more discussion, a bit more analysis presented before we just start drafting up legislation and changes to what we do in the town.
Maybe we put that on the next agenda? As as one option. At the pleasure of the council. I'd like to look at it a little bit more. I have big recollections of two sides of that story, and I don't, I can't do it now because I don't remember exactly what it was. But I think looking into it and putting on the agenda for next time with input from maybe John, I think it's worthwhile looking at it. I'm not sure that tonight we're, it doesn't sound like we're ready for that.
Obviously, we would, I would not support us drafting an ordinance and voting on an ordinance, but having it put on the agenda with a sample ordinance to discuss. The reason that we're doing it at 11:40 at night, which is not my intent or my wish in any means, is because I was waiting for a chance that we could do this in the most transparent way possible, and that would be our first public meeting back. I expect, obviously, that when we bring this up on the agenda, hopefully on the second, that there will be a vigorous discussion around the merits and how to best implement that. But I would like to have something to base that discussion off of.
Yeah, I think it needs a bit more discussion. I don't know if a sample ordinance would help maybe, but I I think there's also just general information, as was mentioned, what neighboring counties do specifically. Scope, if we wanted, are we looking at this through all town facilities and parks or one step at a time, if at all? Just, I think a a pretty thorough and broad discussion would be helpful before taking that that next step.
I'm concerned that there's a a pattern of looking for solutions for problems we haven't defined yet. This is now like the second, third solution that we're trying to come up with without a defined problem or where the issue is besides just I've heard, or somebody said, or this is my own personal belief. And it's it's beginning to grow more concerning to me that that's what we're going to be doing as a body. So so, yeah, it needs it needs far more vetting and far more discussion, but I just don't know what the problem is. So if you're hearing stuff, I'm certainly not privy to the same information. I don't know if the Parks and Rec Committee has had this discussion. Sounds like it was raised. Haven't had a report on that. Have no idea where this is even coming from. So it'd be nice to have a little background information on how we get to this point for some of these these issues that are clearly ones that need debate, dialogue, facts, and discussion.
All good on that?
Sounds like it's tabled until we can, you know, get get someone to actually bring some of that analysis forward. I mean, I think that's what is coupled. I know my, I'll put myself in that category certainly. I won't speak for anybody else. But I I agree with Dan. I'm not in the, I'm not in the mentality of trying to provide solutions for problems that have not presented themselves via someone bringing it forward as a significant concern based on either known threats or incidents that have occurred that have almost led to, you know, an incident. Not not privy to those. I'd love to have, you know, our law enforcement folks or others provide us that information who are the experts on that. That's that's why I'd rather I'd rather see that come up from rather than have a discussion about how we're going to form some ordinance. I'd rather take a look at the data, take a look at the information. And and.
I understand the points you guys are making. And I don't want you to feel that this is capricious in any way. Consider it more proactive. I've been in a situation where what we consider to be universal policy on campus alert systems and that sort of thing were instituted when they didn't exist before because of the mishaps and deaths that happened at a school where I was in lockdown. So we had waited for an incident to inform those policies that Virginia Tech instituted. It resulted in 32 deaths. That was the inciting factor. So yes, it can be a threat, or it can be a tragedy. It's it's not an arbitrary suggestion. It's not something that I would broach if I didn't hear widespread concern through the community, including from firearms owners.
I don't know where that widespread is, honestly. Facts, right?
But but I would not, I would not frame it as a capricious argument that is brought up willy-nilly to satisfy an agenda. It's a proactive measure to prevent accidents, mishaps, and to make our town a little bit safer.
Well, I, for one, would be happy to spend some time looking into this subject, and I'll work with some law enforcement people that I know well. I think I think right now the choice is, all right, we put up for a vote, and it's it's turned down. Then we wasted our time and wasted the idea. But to keep the idea alive and let some research into it and find out from other towns what they may or may not have done and why, I'll be happy to volunteer to do that. With help from anybody else.
So what would be the next steps, Pete? You wanted to have a discussion about this moving forward? You comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'd like to have a discussion. I'm not sure if council meeting or workshop might be a little more conducive to discussion, but I understand that that's going to be later in June.
Your next workshop would be the second week, yeah, the second week, second Tuesday in June. Any other?
Is that enough? Is that enough time to even establish, you know, what we're what we're trying to get after, I mean, versus? Again, this is going to throw a lot of things that I keep bringing up, what, you know, the level of its speed and see, I it's. Right now, you see this for a lot of people with our response to COVID, and we've watched this the last two plus months, and people's anger is getting to, you know, pretty high crescendo right now with the way some of these restrictions have been placed on folks throughout our society without any merit. So we, I think, starting to realize that not everybody can be put in a bubble, and life isn't always safe. There are risks in life, and we can't, we can't provide rules and circumstances for every situation. We're going to provide safety and security for everyone in every situation. And and that's, that's just a reality of life. I'm not saying that we go out there and take risks unneedlessly. But in this case, I I think we need to have some more developed information before we start trying to change significant protocols or significant legislation for our town. I I mean, I think that that takes a a good month to do what the mayor was just talking about, of working with other towns, you know, to get some of that information, to work with our law enforcement, to start getting some data. That's not something that people pull together in two weeks. I, for one, would be, you know, first first opportunity is bring this to the workshop in July officially.
I would propose to do it after the budget. I mean, if we're going to spend our time on political discussions and have our staff get into the weeds of these topics, then let's focus on some real business upfront and get through the budget. I think it's a critical time for staff to be spending their time getting through that process and what's going to be a challenging budget year. And then we can, we can get into these discussions. But, you know, let's let's talk about it. I just think after the budget would be a more practical time to do this. We have to pass a budget by July 1st, so perhaps the first workshop in July.
I I am a little, I'm a little disheartened that this should be framed as a political discussion, considered a very practical discussion. I mean, what I don't think, what I've proposed is to keep people from carrying guns onto the soccer field where our kids play soccer, to prevent people from carrying guns into the library where our kids watch puppet shows, and to Ting Park where they watch a baseball game. I don't consider that political, and some might, but I don't. I consider it practical. And as kids, as a parent of kids who utilize those facilities often, I consider it necessary. And I'd like to see it done in a quick manner, because I don't know waiting that long necessarily in the best interest of anybody.
There's tons of laws on this in the United States, and the problem is not the lack of laws. The problem is how they're enforced. And if you pass a law or an ordinance that says you can't walk onto our property with a weapon, you can still stand on the sidewalk outside the fence at Womble and and do something. You're not going to stop bad actors by having a written piece of paper. I don't think, I don't think the. I I don't think the onus of the bad actor stopping the action is really going to change by by having something. So it's just, I'm really struggling on the motivation, and that's why I term it political, because if you're having these conversations, that's fine, but it it sounds like there's at least three of us that aren't, and that's that's concerning. So if there's stuff that's out there, there's real security concerns, then I think we should be discussing those as a group, and that's not how this was approached.
Randy, how long would it take for people to gather enough information to have a discussion on that? How much, yeah, I'd say how much of your time and like, how much time has you taken?
If if, I guess I phrase it this way. If this is something that the council wants to take up and wants to take up quickly, you know, we will reprioritize some staff efforts to to make that happen. I think Mr. Berry, it it's a fair comment from the standpoint of the the budget over the next two weeks at least, from the recommendation next week, and then the the hearing and the workshop that occur afterward. But we can certainly multi, have multi-large projects going. If that's the desire of council, we can make that happen if that's your, if that's the will of the council. I think based off the information that I've heard, it might be nice to have a little bit more clarity in terms of what types of information would be helpful to come back with. That would be helpful for your conversation, and we would, we would be, we can do that research.
So I heard that a discussion is what we're talking about with some ideas of what the other towns are doing to answer questions. What some proposals of what other audiences are doing, and that's, that's worth discussing. Because I I do hear concerns as well, of a gentleman in the clutching that he did, who came up. You know, I think there are folks that would like voice therapy on either side. And if you put on the agenda, then that's something that people can come and talk with about. So that's an opportunity for us to hear with a lot of people. Because I actually do hear both sides, gun owners, non-gun owners, concerns, not concerns. So it's worth a discussion. I I definitely want a discussion, but I understand with the budget, I think, you know, maybe because July makes sense. That's just the. That answers?
From your. I think I heard, you know, some clarification on on what the state law allows and doesn't allow, and I think that was summarized, I think, accurately. But but no, it's at the, you know, at the pleasure of the council. If you want to talk about it tomorrow, we can make that happen. If you want to talk about it in a month and a half, you know, staff, and make that happen, depending on what your expectation is.
Just to say, if we wait till July, there's a better than decent chance we will be having, forced to have this conversation before that, regardless of what we decide here tonight.
Now, why is that? You got me confused.
Because this has been an ongoing discussion through our parks and rec board, and it might be brought to us before we have a chance to discuss it. Now, I hate to think that on an issue as obviously controversial as this, it's not something we're leaning on.
Again, Aaron, I go back to, I go back to the basic company made up front. I mean, any of these, any of these decisions we're going to make for our town and our residents, I mean, I I would rather not lead with a motion. I won't use the word political. I'll try not to, but but this is a very. I won't use the word political. I'll try not to, but, but this is a very emotionally charged topic that you just brought up for a lot of people and for a lot of reasons. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to try and fall on one side or the other right now because what hasn't been presented to me, and there's always two sides to the story, are the two sides of the story. We're hearing an emotional plea, your pledge, and I, I understand that. I understand, you know, that you are personally affected by this. There are other people that, that don't have that same emotional, you know, sentiment. Again, I would like to hear both sides of the story. I would like to hear, you know, both sides of the facts and, and move forward with, you know, a pragmatic decision. It's not charged just in emotion. So that's, when we're making important decisions like this, we can't lead with the emotion. We have to lead with something that's,
Yeah, and, and I, I understand where you guys are coming from. And obviously if it's the will of, of the majority of the council to push this off until after budget time, that's fine. But again, this is not political. It is not emotional. I, I would not bring it up for consideration. I do not push my personal beliefs onto the town as a whole. This is being proposed because I believe it is good public policy and will keep our town safer. It's not, my past experiences, of course, have guided my thinking on this, obviously. But it is not, I'm not proposing this merely as a political stunt or as a purely emotional reaction to my past experiences. It's because I believe it to be good public policy and one that we are sorely lacking in a little bit behind the times for.
Well, I would be glad to start this process with my personal feelings looking into this tomorrow. And whatever I find out, as soon as I find out something, I'll share it. I don't think we've got enough support now to make, make the motion if you want. But I, I, I think if, if I read you correctly, you feel that strongly about it, wouldn't it make more sense to wait until we have the information that's been discussed and then have a motion? Or you have a motion right now? You're not going to make it?
I'm fine setting, if there's not support for the motion, setting a time for further.
I'll do my best.
And Mayor Council, just for your, for full disclosure, uh, the agenda right now for your June workshop does have capacity to add another item to it. And at this point, you could certainly add it to your July. So I think either one of those two options are certainly workable from a staff perspective. Uh, so that would, uh, that would be the ninth or 10th. Okay, you can pull it up quicker. The ninth?
That's three weeks. Do you have a decent enough compromise? I'm comfortable with the June workshop.
I'm comfortable with what Dan's talking about. I, I don't want to rush into, you know, discussions about this. And I don't want to divert effort from our budget. I mean, we are already seeing, you know, a, a deficit of income coming into the town now that I know Randy and his staff has got to figure out how we're going to migrate our, our way through, you know, the effects that COVID is going to have on, you know, not only this year's budget, but next year's budget. So I, I don't want to divert attention from that important work that we need to do for, for our community right now. I'd prefer we hold this off until July. I don't want to divert staff work on that.
I've not changed my opinion on the budget taking priority.
July workshop?
Yep.
Enough? Enough? Let's transstand it this hour to the manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, no report tonight, uh, other than a reminder that we have our recommended budget presentation next Tuesday, May 26th. That will be in this room at 6:00 PM. Right here. And maybe just one last comment, uh, given the timeframe tonight, when we get to the closed session items, um, I would suggest if you'd like to, you could certainly move those two closed session items to after next Tuesday's meeting, if, if that's the will of the group.
Sounds good to me.
Unless you want to go till one.
We had a bio break.
It's bewitching hour. That's okay with you, counselor? Okay, so we're going to table those until,
Is it, is it anything urgent, counselor?
And I would like to hear a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? You're in trouble. Motion passes. By your, good morning almost.
Good morning.